Peter Sacropani is here. Good evening. I think the architect, Mr. Strulie is on as well, but I don't see him on the Zoom platform in front of me.
He might be joining. There are two people that are joining right now, so he might be one of them. Is he joining by phone or on a?
I'm sorry, I don't know. I don't think he's that technologically advanced, to be frank, so I don't know. He may be just tying himself in by cellphone.
Does it, this is the last four digits of his phone number? Is it eight, nine, I'm sorry, is it nine, four, two, five?
No. No, it's ten, eleven.
Okay, so then that's not him that's joining by phone right now.
Yeah. I'm, well, if they're.
Do you want me to pull up the, do you want me to pull up this survey for you? And you can start talking about the project?
I'd be happy to do that. And I see he's just left me a voicemail. So maybe he's having some technical difficulties. He can't seem to log into the meeting. I have the wrong meeting ID.
Okay, Ken, let me try.
Do you want me to give you the meeting ID number right now?
Let's see. I believe I have it. Meeting ID I have is eight, twenty-seven, four, six, eight, eight, six, nine, three, one.
That is correct.
I believe he, now is that, I assume that's the same meeting ID that would be used if, in fact, he was using a cellphone or a landline phone. Is that correct?
Yes, it should work for all of them. I don't know about landline unless it's connected to another device like a computer.
Yeah.
But it would work for a cellphone, iPad, computer.
Well, it's your meeting, but the last thing in the world I want to do is delay it. So one of the questions I have is maybe, if you want, you could move on to a.
Mr. Sacropani, I don't think you want to do that.
Okay.
Because we only have one, we only have one other agenda. I mean, we can, but we only have one other agenda item tonight. And unfortunately, I suspect that will go on for a while.
Okay, so if you would allow me, then a minute, I will, I will reach out to him and tell him how to call. I'll do it right now. Curtis, hi. We're waiting for you.
Lynn, why don't we unmute Mr. Sacropani and see if he's making any progress?
Okay.
Yeah, so I reached him. I gave him the passcode and I gave him the phone number and the passcode, and he is dialing in as we speak. Let me, I think to move it along, because I really don't like to delay all these people. Let me just start and tell you what we're trying to do and accomplish. And then if there are technical questions, by then I hope he has joined the call. So.
Before you start, I'm going to bring up your survey, so while you talk, you can reference it, okay?
Sure, please, thank you.
Okay.
Please proceed, though.
Yeah, so we are residents of the state of Florida. I'm in Florida now, as I present to you virtually. This house is owned in trust. We raised our family at this house. And really, what we're trying to do, and you can see the house there and the tennis court and the pool, and the pool house. What we're trying to do is essentially stay close to our family. Our kids were raised in New Canaan. I'm happy to say, because it's a terrific place. Both kids came back as adults. I have two children married, two grandchildren. We want to give this house in trust to our daughter, who has two children. And we own another home in Long Island, New York. And we will be here, you know, ninety days a year, a hundred, a hundred days a year, and not consecutive days, because we go back and forth between New York and Connecticut when we are up there. And we just need a place to live where we have a master bedroom. And that's really what we do, what we want to do. We want to add essentially over the, I guess, the 1,000-square-foot limitation, about 132 feet. I think it's probably not lost on you that the area, as the partial shows, is 2.088 acres in a one-acre zone. I mean, I guess technically I'd never do it because the home is one of the great homes in New Canaan. You could knock it down and you could build two separate houses. Of course, I'd never do that, but, you know, we have that kind of land. So I think what we're asking for is really not, you know, a burden on the land and burden on the acres. It would fit very nicely. The design of it is going to be seamless and go right into the design of what is now the pool house. I'm not asking for additional kitchen facilities. We don't have a kitchen, as that is defined, don't really need one. You know, we're not going to be doing entertaining in this house. But we do want to have a, probably a first-floor master. We're, we're not old, but we're not young either. And, you know, we'd like to live here and have a life estate with our kids and live there for the rest of our lives. And we're very happy to sign a document that restricts this and that it will not be rented. We, we would never rent it and have no intention of doing that. It would be used, frankly, for family. I will tell you, when we built this, this, this pool house or this cottage back in 2002, I guess it was, we did it so that our elderly parents, when they came up, had a place to stay. They weren't living there, but they would come up, you know, for a week or two at a time. And it was a beautiful place and it, we have a lot of nice memories. So really, you know, to me, this is kind of consistent with, what drew us to New Canaan and why my kids came back to New Canaan. It's a family place. We want to be close to our grandchildren. My son lives about five miles away, up on Turtleback Road. So that's our intention. Nothing grandiose. The landscaping will be consistent. We have some beautiful gardens on the property. We will maintain those. The house is, if anyone's ever seen it, is extremely well-maintained and well-kept and cared for. It was built in the, in the twenties. It's been refurbished over the years. It's, it's really a beautiful New Canaan home and everything we do is consistent with that, with that ethos, if you will. So that's really our request. And, you know, hopefully, this board will approve that. And if so, we would then go and get the resetting of the, it has a septic, separate septic system as well. We would go and get that redesigned, get our building permits, and probably it would be ready for us, hopefully, by May, when we typically leave Florida and, you know, do our journey up north.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
I just have a question regarding trying to get oriented on the property. The large amount of green trees, tall green trees that run in a row, where would they be on this drawing?
So, so there's an apple orchard in the front of the property. Can you see the cursor? Probably not, right? No, you can't see.
Yes, she can.
You can see my cursor, is that right? Oh, fantastic. Okay, so, I'm sorry?
No, they can't see. They can only see my cursor.
What's yours?
That's my cursor.
Sorry, no, I guess we can't.
All right, okay. If you would just take your cursor and move it behind the dwelling where it says wood fence, yeah, yeah, okay. And see the property line?
Right.
From there, all the way down to the, beyond where it says field-located septic cover, all the way there, all the way there. Those are, there's a line of evergreens that I have planted years and years ago that are probably fifteen or twenty feet tall, that are maintained by Hutchinson and Town, are fed every year, and they are quite lush and they're quite full. And it provides, it provides great privacy both to us and to our neighbors that, that are on the other side of our, our, our line. Deborah?
Well, no one's looking, looking in there, that's for sure.
No, no, it's, it's quite private.
Anybody else?
It's John Criss.
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Yeah. So where is the current septic that's servicing the pool house? And where do you plan to put it?
So the current septic is running, do you see where it says frame pool house?
Yes.
I believe the current septic runs, runs contiguous to the, where it says tennis court to the right of that. Not by the pool, but there's a, I think, a leaching field there and there's a tank that's in the back of the, of the pool house. Now, I don't know where the new septic is going to go because I, or it may actually stay there or just have to be moved slightly, because that's something, obviously, an engineer will have to design and obviously design it, the code, which we would, of course, do.
So you haven't pulled permits for that yet?
No, no, I would not pull a permit unless I have, you know, the special permit authorizing us to do the expansion, right?
Now, the expansion is an up expansion?
It's an out and up. So this is a two-story cottage. And what we would do is make a two-story extension. Now, if you've seen it, it has, it has a very, has a very interesting design. There's a lot of beautiful space, but it's wasted space. And we would continue with that, if you will, pejorative, that wasted space, just to be consistent with the design. The, the real living, I think, is going to be on the first floor, where the addition is. That's where the bedroom would be and a, and likely another, another bathroom.
So there's one bathroom now? You would have two bathrooms?
We would.
Full bath?
We would have two full, yep.
Okay. And no kitchen at all now?
There is no, there's a refrigerator, there is a dishwasher. There is no stove whatsoever. I mean, there's a, beg your pardon?
No cooking facilities?
No.
So with a mini fridge, I guess, one of the beer fridges you have in your dorm? Or you have in your dorm?
Well, I, I'll take the compliment. I haven't had a dorm in forty-some-odd years, but even longer. No, actually, it's, actually, it's, it's a little bigger. It's, it's a full-size, well, it's, it's sort of a mini, but it's tall. There's a wine cooler as well.
Okay, but just a fridge and a dishwasher and two showers or shower over tub and two toilets? And then the rest is open space for various things?
It's, it is open space. It is one open space room.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Okay, Lynn, why don't we open this up to the public? And certainly do not have to touch base with all of our friends here for Houston Lane. So if you see anybody else who is not associated with the Houston Lane.
Okay, give me a second.
Or, or the View for that matter.
Okay. Yeah. So who's on, who's on the Samsung SM? And then the only other one?
That's probably me. I'm Curtis Strulie, I was the architect.
Ah, okay, awesome. And then whose phone number ends in nine, four, two, five? Are you here for this meeting? The other one is Nancy. Are you here for this item? Or are you here for one of the other items? And if it's another item, which one? I think that's it, Mr. Chairman, actually, because those are the three that I, that are not associated with any of the cases.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. This hearing is closed. Okay, items number two and three, which we will hear together. Item number two, discussion, consideration, the request. Jaclyn Kaufman, Carmody Terrence, Sandak Hennessy, authorized agent for Thomas San Severino. Owner eight, ten, twelve, and fourteen Houston Lane. Petition for change in zoning boundary pursuant to section eight, two, D for properties currently in the B resident zone to the retail B zone for eight Houston Lane, ten Houston, twelve Houston, fourteen Houston, as well as Houston Lane. And item number three, eight and ten Houston Lane. Upon application, Jaclyn Kaufman, Carmody Terrence, Sandak Hennessy, authorized agent for Thomas San Severino. Owner for special permit, site plan approval sections four, three, four, three, D, one, four, three, D, one, D, four, eight, C, six, H, one, eight, two, B, and eight, two, point, two, A, to permit a mixed-use development containing twelve residential units and approximately 315 square feet of commercial space with associated parking, landscaping, utility, and site improvements at eight Houston Lane and ten Houston Lane, as well as Houston Lane, the proposed retail B zone. Ms. Kaufman?
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jackie Kaufman and I'm an attorney with Carmody Terrence, Sandak and Hennessy in Stanford, Connecticut. I am representing the applicant, Thomas San Severino, and he's here with us tonight, as well as members of our development team, Lenny DeAndrea, our civil engineer, our traffic engineer, Michael O'Rourke, and Ryan Salvatore, our architect, my associate, Jason Klein, and my colleague, Mike Murray, as well. So together, we hope to be able to answer any of your outstanding questions. Given that we have spent the last two sessions speaking on a limited basis, I would like to take a few minutes just to refresh the commission on some of the details of the commission, of the application. I'd like to start by thanking you all, too, for the time you've taken with this application and afforded to this applicant. We have taken the time to put forth our best efforts to work closely with various municipal departments to close any open matters. And as we reported to you during our last session in September, we believe we've done so and now have the positive referrals for the application before you, both either the map change and our site plan and special permit. To proceed. We've also made best efforts with our neighbors. You can see many of whom are here with us tonight and who have been with us over time. And they each have some similar concerns and different concerns. And I think to some extent, we have made great progress and have agreed on certain things. We had talked to you about certain development restrictive covenants that we had, that we had offered and were in discussion about. And we feel that we were, we're getting close. We were getting close on some of those, but then have, have departed in other, in other aspects. And I think that this has resulted from, from, really, from the map change, starting with the map change request. If I may, just to, to go back, we are Houston Lane. We are private road located off of Heritage Hill. It's at the intersection of Locust Avenue, consists of five lots located in the residential B zone. Mr. San Severino owns four of those five lots, which equal approximately 1.3 acres. Those lots are improved with 11 units. Two traditional residential properties, two multifamily buildings, and then sixteen Houston is owned by Mrs. Corson, and that is a single-family dwelling. The properties are bordered to the north and to the west by residentially used, residential uses, office uses, and condominium uses by the res B zone and the apartment zone. If, as I talked to these, Lynn, do you mind putting our PowerPoint presentation up just so we can refresh everyone as to the area that we're speaking about? So currently, the property is in the, let's, that, that's our property there, that's eight and 10. And then if you can move your cursor, please, to the north to show numbers 12 and 14, a little higher. You can see the two, that long building, those are 12 and 14. North of that, condominium complex presented here tonight. And then number 16, Ms. Corson's property, right there. Eight and 12 run toward the distance, you know, on the south and border the town municipal lot. So let's advance to our next slide, please, to our GIS slide. There, you can see those same properties. Those five properties are all accessed by Houston Lane, which is a private road that we have ownership rights for, over. Let's continue, Lynn, please. We can, we can just go through these quickly. We can put them up while I speak. The properties, as I mentioned, bordered to the north and west by residential, office, and condo uses in the res B and the apartment zone. There's another map, I think, that's after these. You can just run through these two, Lynn, just to refresh everyone's memory. I think at this point, we're all pretty familiar with these. And then to the east by the res B and single and multifamily units, to the south by the retail B, namely the town municipal parking lot, which I just showed you. So we're going through here, the site photos, and you can see what we have. As I mentioned, 11 units, two multifamily buildings, a two-family home and a one-family home. So let's go to our existing conditions map. This is, this is hard to read on here, so let's advance to the next, please. When we filed the application, as you can see here, we included a proposal that took all five of the properties and Houston Lane from the res B into the retail B zone. During the course of our sessions together, we have, we can advance to our next slide. We removed number 16, which is the single-family home by Ms. Corson and her request, removed her property from the map change. But as you can see, eight and 10, which also are before you with a site plan and special exception request, border the existing retail B, the entirety of that perimeter, borders on the, the town parking lot to the south. And let's, can we go down to the next map? I think this was refined even further. And then now, at our last session, let's stop here. And at our last session, in response to questions raised by the commission about what, what if, what would your map change look like? If it only pertained to numbers eight and 10, which are consistent with the site plan and special permit application before you, what would that look like? And we submitted to you, to this plan for, for discussion purposes. But what we've learned in the last month, in our discussions with, with our neighbors, is that the, the value of the map that's before you, I think, is, is, is great. And even though it makes good planning sense to the applicant, to our team, and even potentially to our neighbors, to include the back properties, the multifamily buildings on numbers 12 and 14, we do not have a site plan and a special permit application before you for those. We have every intention of developing those consistent with the development that's before you. And Mr. San Severino has been extremely transparent with both the commission staff and his neighbors about his intention to build a companion, a companion project on these two lots. However, in response to, well, what would that look like? We created a concept plan. That concept plan included 20 units and ample parking for that. And that really is what it is. It's a, it's a concept plan. It has not been fully engineered. It has not, the investment prospects haven't been fully studied. It was really an exercise in geometry to see what would be, what could be a comfortable fit. And that has not proven to be enough for our neighbors. They're looking for greater assurance about what might be here. Certainly, under this regulation, it would require a mixed, it would be a site plan as I'm talking about the, the future here. The two lots that we are, that are not shown on this map. What happens in the future, oh, we don't exactly know. We can say that it's our intention now to have a modest retail and mixed-use development, same retail space, I really mean, commercial space, similar to what we see today, and up to 20 units. Could that unit count be reduced? Yes, are we willing to commit to a development plan that is not fully vetted? No, we don't think that makes good planning sense or good business sense. But we had made a commitment to our neighbors that we would be willing to engage in, in agreement, a private agreement as to what that would be, that could be developed and used as, in the form of a restrictive covenant that would be filed on the land records to provide them assurance so that everyone's assets remained protected. And we felt that was the best effort that, that we could make on that behalf. Understandably, it was not comfortable, that was not a comfortable fit for our neighbors. And they are there before you tonight to object, some of which have put in their written objections prior, just like this afternoon. To that, we revisit the question that you raised, Mr. Goodman, which is, what about just, what would this look like if we just did eight and 10? And what is before you tonight is what we can live with and propose, that if the future for the other two parcels cannot be predicted now, it would be better to protect them and keep them in their existing zone and to only address what we know and the development plan that we can defend with facts, details, and a fully-vetted site plan. And what we think is a very good one of that. So we propose to you that this map is an alternative for your consideration as part of our zoning map and zoning request. So if you continue down to the next slide, please, Lynn, the existing zoning map. I just want to revisit some, some of our, our zone map discussion. You can see here the confluence of zoning, zoning areas that we face on Houston Lane. See, we've got business A in red, business B in yellow, retail B here in green. You can see it's a very, it's a very small area that is located to the, to the north of the more dense business A. And in looking at our choices here for, for different zones, we had different, different options available to us based on what we bordered. Specifically, since eight and 10, which come right off of Houston Lane, were the first, first properties to be developed, retail B appeared to be a natural and appropriate fit and stretched by pulling it up, especially since the entirety of number eight borders the res B zone to the south. And so the retail B zone was carefully selected here. Immediately on the north lily side of Locust, we've really seen a nice regeneration of the mixed uses. The post office, the new flats and townhomes. And even further south and east, there's been multiple infill developments with two- and three-story mixed uses that have integrated quite well into the downtown. So given that a natural connectivity to, to the retail B zone was critical, the apartment zone and the retail B were the leading choices and we think are both supported by the, by the town plan. But certainly, the apartment zone, I know, has been a zone that you have taken, you've, you started conversations among yourselves and your various task force and subcommittees about, about the apartment zone. I also engaged with you on an application in the last year about the apartment zone and learned quite a bit about what your goals for the apartment zone and potential multifamily rezoning may be as part of that application, which was ultimately withdrawn. And based on some of that information, we also thought that retail B was the right fit. And notably because the retail B already allows for mixed uses. So when we look at the res B, and it's something that, when we speak about the site plan and the special permit application, that the applicant was very, very mindful of, is that there are many overlapping development opportunities between the res, in the B residential and the retail B zones. And I think that's very important because from an expectation standpoint, when one lives around this, when we look at development. when we look at development and massing and what can be here, having those consistencies, I think is important for while you're in a transition period between zones. And as the, you know, commission considers additional changes over time to its multifamily program and platform, having these, these consistencies already present in the regulation again make retail be a, a stronger fit than anything else here. Certainly in the B residence zone, you can have residential uses as a bright. You can have other uses with special permit, including two-family dwellings and other lodging type uses, educational type uses. But it is not just limited, though it's called resby, it's not limited only to one and two-family zones. There are commercial uses that are fairly active uses that are already permitted there. And with site plan approval, not only to special permission, permit approval, bed and breakfast, private schools, daycares, municipal facilities, government facilities, group homes, clubs, public utilities and other private recreation uses. Now, certainly that's not retail. It's some of these are commercial, but some of them are quite active, non-residential uses. So the retail B zone, which then offers many more options on the commercial level comes into play, some of those are overlapping. And then also we can add in the uses such as office uses, medical office uses, galleries, museums, multifamily residential uses, retail businesses, banks, food shops, et cetera. It was given the access point. It was never the intention to utilize this zone change for anything other than what's before you. But we certainly understand the position you're in and our neighbors raise that, oh, but it could be, it could be anything. Since a companion site plan and special permit application are before you tonight, we hope that you can accept that particular application. And with a special permit, you do have the ability to condition it in ways that we think can bring some, I want to say closure to certain uses, but also some understanding about, about the intensity of use that can be here and proposed. And certainly, Mr. Sanz Averino is a person and developer of his word. And if the restrictive covenants, which again, private agreement, but if that is still an attractive thing to, both to you and our neighbors, we would continue to offer that. It has not been finalized or accepted, but we certainly stand by, well, the original offer to, to keep that so that there is an expectation as to not only what happens today or over the next few years, but it really in over a long-term period of time. But also consistent between the B res and the retail B, and I think this is very important, are some of the massing opportunities from a height perspective. The heights are consistent. Actually, the B res, you can go thirty to thirty-five feet without any, without any stories, right, without a story maximum. However, in the retail B, you can go to a maximum of thirty feet or two and a half stories, whichever is less. And so it's actually a little bit more restrictive. In the apartment zone even, which we border, we have, you can go to the same thing. It's two and a half stories or thirty. So again, you have a consistency in terms of an expectation of the size of a building, which again is all based on the size of the underlying zone. But from a height perspective, it's consistent with the other zones that are around it. We thought that that was important and have designed a building that's consistent with those. So we are not going to be requesting any special permits as to massing size. So for, with those, with those details in mind and on our, in our application materials, which were filed in June, we go through the town plan of development and identify over several pages, the different ways that this proposal meets the town plan. And I think what's so interesting is that, you know, over time, over the last few months, from the time this was filed, I think we've only seen the market in, in Connecticut grow. And that's been a very, very fortunate thing for property owners. But growth and change are, are expectations that we all have. Zoning is not a promise. It is, we all need to, I think, adapt and identify goals and ways to meet them. And we think that this project and this zoning map change do so. The town plan recognizes that the growth and the change that we're talking about are most likely to occur in town from the redevelopment of existing property. And certainly that's true here. It comments that the age and composition of the town is changing and that development should adapt to that and that the commission can and should regularly continue to review its regulations in this manner to ensure they are meeting community needs. Where there's opportunity to infill and create appropriate densities that can be supported, provided, of course, that the underlying application cited or special permit makes sense. And that there is a need to provide for a range of housing options for people of different income levels and at different stages of life. And certainly this is the type of product that would address that. To be able to do that requires, does require a map change. The goals are to, to promote appropriate development. And, and I offer you these, and I, and I do feel compelled to read them because at our first meeting, I did not. And I only, I, I only referred to the documents that were filed. And I hope that during your consideration of this application, you'll revisit those. Because certainly right with the town plan, it is your document. You're, you're the ones that ultimately make the interpretation of the information that's there. You've been provided and we've been provided a copy late in the afternoon of documentation from our neighbors that, and you have previously too by another neighbor that for, for reasons that it does not meet the town plan. And, and certainly we can go through those one by one, too. But I feel like, given that those have been submitted, that I'd also like to go on the record with other, with some selections as to why this is, is consistent. Promoting appropriate development and providing for a diverse housing portfolio. And I think we know now too with several of the different coalitions that are out there right now, that diverse housing portfolios are very important in state and important within Fairfield County. And, and I quote, "There's an interest in additional development in and near the downtown area for housing, particularly empty nesters and senior citizens." Certainly the building that's before you would be ideal for that. "A possible strategy identified for downtown includes providing additional housing opportunities in and near the downtown, including multifamily housing, multifamily senior friendly housing, mixed-use rental housing for younger persons. Higher-density zones already permitted in and near the downtown, including retail B, are the best sites for higher-density development since it will help promote development of a vibrant downtown with a variety of land uses and help meet local housing needs. Residential uses in mixed-use buildings in the town center area also contribute to the overall ambiance and character of the town center area and should continue to be allowed." So here we think that the proposed zone change supports these goals, the proposed zone change, because it creates an opportunity for development that appeals to empty nesters and young professionals. It's a unique product. It's a little bit different than the other multifamily that you have, that you have approved and seen implemented over the last few years. It allows for a desirable multi-story, moderate-density, mixed-use development, also page thirty-eight. It allows for increased density to promote desired development patterns within and around the downtown, page forty, and supports economic development. Certainly, the more foot traffic or the more bodies you have in your downtown who live there will continue to patronize the downtown. Another goal of the town plan is to orient development activities towards pedestrians. Again, that's supportive of economic development, certainly. And this zone change creates the, an opportunity that can support that goal. It supports transitional lifestyles. It supports and accommodates those who don't own cars or who choose not to drive for various reasons. It supports new housing proximate to the downtown, strengthening downtown business because of the proximities of the residents to restaurants and shopping. And this project, it's not, it's not specifically identified as a senior housing project, but it does create an attractive housing option for seniors. There is a two thousand and ten final report entitled Senior Needs, Options and Recommendations. It lasts. And in that, it says, "Providing diverse and affordable housing for all stages of life, provides diverse housing and aging in place for residents, increases the town supply of single-level, accessible, moderately-sized units, fills the need for smaller, more affordable housing, and provides units closer to the train station." The report also recommends that town planning should create positive market demand, meaning senior market demands, and forecasts that eighty to a hundred and twenty-one level condos near town with general senior-friendly design would be needed as of the 2020s. And certainly, we think that this proposal would help meet that goal. In reviewing some of the comments that were raised by our neighbors that saying that this proposal was inconsistent with the town plan and with the policies and goals offered therein, I, I'd just like to, to reiterate a few comments. Number one, I think that reducing or reducing the map change to those parcels, which we have a better idea of what's proposed, eliminates some of these unknowns and some of the challenges that they've raised here. Certainly, I don't disagree that a zone change can't be conditioned upon development of a specific use. You cannot condition a zone change, but you can. And as we have offered a, a private agreement to address some of those issues. And certainly on these two parcels have provided you with a very, really what we think is a great application, meeting many of the goals. It is a very limited, I should say, has a negligible traffic, parking impact, and also has a negligible commercial office space that's proposed with it. Again, that is an office space only. It is, it's not a highly trafficked retail space that requires a lot of parking. It's four hundred square feet. And we expect to use that as a, as an office space for leasing. The increased residential density, they say here, overburdens, you know, this private road, Houston Lane. Certainly, we think that is untrue with twelve units. And we'll get into that when we talk a little bit about our site plan. I'm just reading through this. I just got this so today, so I am just still going through it, undated, I'd say. The existing dwellings on Houston Lane are a mix of modest, truly, they provide a genuine variety of housing types already, which are sustainable for workforce housing and form an appropriate transition. Honestly, right now, you've seen the property, you've seen, you've seen the photos that we just provided to you. They were purchased really in this state, the ones especially up front. They are not in great condition and not because Mr. Sanz Averino doesn't care about his property. He takes really good care of his properties. He has multifamily buildings, is doing the best he can with that. But it's, it's certainly not an ideal use, the way that they are designed and being used today. And they certainly can be improved on. Do they offer a decent multifamily living experience? They offer, they offer space, but I don't know that it is, that it's necessarily ideal. And certainly this building will meet, meet different goals that I just reviewed. And it says here, one cannot, you know, can't be reasonably be deemed that the type of mixed retail residential use was contemplated, just because it's small. And that is absolutely untrue. It absolutely is, is contemplated in the zoning regulation now in the retail B. There's opportunity for a mixed-use development with no minimums or maximums. That's our opinion. We spent a good deal of time approaching the commission on this as part of a pre-application and also with staff before we brought this application. And it was never identified to us that the, that the mix that we were proposing was in any way inconsistent with the goals of, of that, of that zoning regulation. And we asked that very directly. In fact, it's, it's almost unfortunate that they try to point out that this doesn't really work. Because ultimately, in our, in our review and understanding with our neighbors is that this is what they do want to work. In fact, they just want to limit the density a little bit more, primarily in phase two. And if they raise it for phase one, even though, you know, we think we put forth before you what is already a modest and controlled number. But that's been something that's been very attractive. It's a bit of a disingenuous, disingenuous comment to say, oh, the commission didn't, never thought about this way, because ultimately, that's what they're asking us to do. Let's limit the retail that we put here. And we keep saying, we don't really want it to be retail. We want it to be a controlled, service-based, commercial use that is complementary to the, to the housing that's proposed to be around it. We would want the same of phase two as well. But it's, it's, it's just simply untrue. It's undefined. It is an open regulation. It's open to your interpretation, as it was open to our interpretation. And certainly our interpretation, I think, is what others around us would be most comfortable with, which is that the housing opportunity outweigh the commercial on these particular lots. And it's true, this is using the retail B is, is a way to achieve the density that we're proposing. But it also makes good sense and is consistent with the town plan. And that is the right zone for these two lots, as I've already pointed out. The we talked about non-development, I've talked about the restrictive covenant. They talk a little bit about phase two versus phase one. I think I've addressed that as well. A zone change to retail B would open the door to uncontrollable development along Heritage Hill Road that would be incompatible with the existing residential uses and historic resources. That's a, that's a very dramatic statement, because there are several control methods that we've just reviewed in terms of massing and uses and ways to do this right. But I also point out something that I said at the original hearing and the, the first hearing back in July. And that's we have this nice little hamlet here. It's not really up and down Heritage Hill that we're offering. When you look through the photos, you see that these five properties or four properties is owned by Mr. Sanz Averino are located kind of below, below grade. So there is a nice separation. If you're walking or driving along Heritage Hill, Houston Lane goes down gradient. You, you see the tops, you see the treetops, you see the top of a building. You're not seeing commercial activity. And you wouldn't see parking in and out if you had a big commercial property back here. If it resulted in that, which again, is not the intention, but just to, to defend the point is that this is, it is a contained spot. It makes sense for, for many reasons, but it also makes sense because there, there is a break in the connectivity between the apartment zone and and other residential zones that do sit properly up on Houston Lane. And it does provide a nice separation barrier. In fact, we were trying to create some connectivity by creating a staircase and a platform that would allow pedestrians to access the sidewalk from, from down below on the driveway, without having to walk all the way up the driveway and then back to enjoy Heritage Hill. And we did require an easement to do that from the condo owner to the north, because they own a small tail that goes right in front of our property. And we, we removed that amenity because we did not receive the easement. And it, we think it's unfortunate, but again, it just reiterates that there is this natural separation here. Some of the specific relevant portions that our neighbors have identified due to the population growth has slowed. This is actually a plus for apartment living. And I've seen the commission discuss these transitions to keep people in town on, on other applications. And new Canons population may experience a slight decrease in the future as schoolchildren graduate and households get smaller. We certainly want to keep people in town. And that's something that I mentioned that the town plan has identified. And they're creating opportunities to, to transition and downsize has been, has been a positive for many people in town. Then there are plan themes that are identified here. Then there are planned themes that are identified here that we actually think support our application. Again, providing for this diverse housing portfolio, identifying that there should be no growth for the sake of growth, and this is certainly not for the sake of sake of anything. I mean, this is there are identified needs, and we've seen this development pattern play out over the last several years in the downtown and with the needs changing. Then it seems that there are some historic resources that are identified, saying that this is terrible, that we shouldn't have this property or change the zone, because it's across the street from historic resources, a historic house and barns, and but we're here. We're already in a different zone. These are very different properties. We don't have any historic resources now on our on our property. We submitted a memo confirming that to you a few months back, but I would think that having a more attractive more attractive building, one that is both newer but also very respectfully designed, would only enhance surrounding historic resource or historic properties rather than having houses that are not significant to the inventory and are otherwise falling down would not be would not be a consistent goal. Again, this is P O C D goal to nurture the downtown. Several things here in here, I think, supporting in the case, housing for empty nesters, building design and scale is especially important. We've done that. B rez is compatible with the Retail B, as I've discussed. Again, help diversify of housing portfolio. A few of these things really just are very consistent with the items that we have we have mentioned. So I don't think that any of the bull points and items that are shared in that in that memo are particularly compelling. If we can go, please, to the next slide, because we do also have before your site plan and special permit application for the development of, oh, I'm sorry, here you can see a little bit closer, Retail B versus Res B and multifamily zone. So let's go now to the architecturals, please. Nothing has changed on these since we've last viewed them with you, too, at least from a massing perspective. I will say that we submitted a revised site plan yesterday, and that captures two things. There were two parking spaces. Lynn, can you just circle for me on the site plan? Oh, no, it's okay. You can do it there. Let's go down two more. Let's go to the landscape site plan, the color plan. Here we go. Let's use that one. Landscape plans to be revised. It doesn't matter. This is you can see, would you mind highlighting those two spaces for me, Lynn, at the southerly entry point? Up to the left, up to the left, to the left. Nope.
This one?
No, right where you come in off, when you come in off the road.
Oh, very good. Sorry. Sorry.
We proposed two parking spaces here. They were identified as Entisario by by Mr. Lampert, and just simply because his home is across the street. So we had put some time and effort into relocating those as as a courtesy to him, and the plan that you received yesterday that I have further down, but is very hard to read on the screen, removes those two spaces and relocates them to the side and back of the property. Mr. DeAndrea can answer any questions for you about that, and he pointed out today, it actually gives us some opportunity to to play around with giving some additional landscaping on Ms. Corson's property, because we had to rejigger some some space around, so it actually results in, I think, good things for two of our neighbors. And also, Lynn, would you just mind circling the stair element for me? Right there across. So as I just mentioned, we removed that small amenity there. Now we'll just be remain a stone wall and then landscaped across the top. But again, we have one, two and a half-story building here. It contains 12 residential units. Oh, I'm sorry. I think I rounded up to 400 square feet, but it's actually 315 square feet of ground floor commercial space, and the intention is to use that, as I said, as an office space. Six units will be located on the ground floor, one one-bedroom and five two-bedroom, and six two-bedroom units to be located on the second level. Entry to the building is provided in both the front and the rear. And Mr. Salvatore is here, too, to answer any additional questions that you may have. The parking is all behind the building, all on site. We have our loading space, and we have requested a special permit of the commission to modify the landscape standards under Section Six. Lynn, would you mind just pointing to the southerly boundary? We have a row of parking spaces here, and we've actually added one back here. So your regulations require that every 10 parking spaces requires a landscaped buffered island. And in our original submission, we had a continuous row of 11. The new site plan actually has a continuous row now of 12, because we've added one back here. So we are asking for a continuous row of 12 without any landscape breaks in lieu of the 10, and this allows us, again, to take landscaping out of the front and right at the you know, right at the mouth of the application or the mouth of the property, and that will be filled instead with landscaping and will eliminate blocktop and any inconvenience to to our neighbors for both parking and lights. And also, we have densely landscaped the perimeter, and we think that that is a better use of the landscaping rather than in the within the parking lot. Also, Lynn, if you don't mind pointing to where the bay window jets out at the turn in the driveway. Thank you. Right in there. We originally requested a special permit of 43D1D and 48C, asking it was for the front yard setback of five feet to be relocated to the building line, which was also the property line. At the time, we had not obtained title rights to Houston Lane. It was still in question, but we have since acquired those rights, and because these properties will be merged, we have we no longer have a need for that special permit. And finally, the and the most important special permit is Section 43D1, which is to allow dwelling units on the property in connection with the mixed-use development before you. So again, we have a total area of 23,940 square feet. This can support up to 15 residential units at 1,500 square feet each, but the applicant here is proposing a building containing 12 units, and those range between 610 square feet and 1,110 square feet. So we're in compliance with the regulation in terms of the size, the unit size, but certainly, we need your support to do that. And in the application materials, I spend a good deal of time going through each of the special permit criteria as to why we think that the building is well-suited here. I won't bore you with those. We have talked about those before, and certainly, I can return to them. But the one that I do want to speak about now and invite our traffic engineer just to to refresh our record with is with regard to the viability of the parking and traffic, which we think can be very, is modest and doesn't result in a negative impact. Mike, can I invite you to share your thoughts with the commission, please?
Jackie, I'm just gonna unshare for a second so I can find him and unmute him.
Sure.
There you go. You can't, for some reason, he's talking, but we can't hear him.
Mike?
Mr. O'Rourke, do you have your audio on?
Mike, I'm going to suggest if you go down to the arrow by your mute button, you may have to just adjust your mic level. So if you press that button, go to your mute, there's a small arrow. If you click on that arrow, it will take you to audio features. So hover over the mute button, click the arrow to the right, and see if your microphone levels are on. You can adjust those volumes. No, Mike, we can't hear you. I'll continue, and perhaps what we can do is, Mike, do you want to try to call in on the phone? Lynn, would you be able to share the dial-in number in the chat so that Mike can call in?
Sure.
Thank you all for your patience. I'm sorry for the technical difficulty.
Okay, so I just shared it in the chat window, but if you can hear Michael O'Rourke, it's 1646-558-8656.
Mike, were you able to receive that? Can you call in? This is unfortunate.
He left he left a meeting, so.
Well, we'll try to to have him call back in in a moment.
Ms. Kaufman, while we're waiting for him, is there anything else you can jump to that you still wanted to cover, or was that?
No, I think that many of the reasons that I raised when I was reviewing our our zone map change are consistent with the special permit application summaries, you know, why this is suitable location for the use and appropriate improvement, how the parking works. We're close to the downtown, and certainly, the, I think, one of the greatest factors for your consideration is the consistency with the town plan, which I already reviewed. So if there's, we can certainly wait for Michael to call back in. To Lanny or Ryan, is there anything else, or Tom, that you'd like to add before we move forward? I don't see I don't see any that I've that I've missed anything from my team. So if there's, if you'd like to move on to something else, or if the commission has some questions or other
Yeah.
we can jump back to parking as a
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, so let's do that. So commissioners' questions for the applicant.
I do. Kent Turner. Attorney Kaufman, you know, part of the P O C D and the access to downtown, you know, the pedestrian access. I'm looking at the site plan. I don't see an easy way of traveling on a sidewalk without going into the street to to connect with downtown. Maybe you could put that site plan back up and describe how pedestrians could, you know, walk safely on a sidewalk.
Certainly, and in fact, Lynn, would you mind returning to the site plan page, and then we'll also go back up to to the original plan? I'm going to get a little close to my screen. Don't get, sorry about that. I have to look very closely at it, too. What an amenity that had been proposed, if you can zone in on that. Thank you so much, Lynn. And as that centers, where you see the driveway there, that's the front door. I'm sorry, as you see, Houston Lane driveway. You see there's a purple arrow right there, just to the left of the arrow. You can see there was an amenity that included stairs connecting to the sidewalk. Could you go look a little bit left?
I understand.
You're on it.
I understand.
And to achieve that required an easement from our neighbor to the north, which was not granted. So now what is required is that one would walk up the private driveway to to the sidewalk.
We're not having dinner. Don't you find that, you know, I'm going to say a little dangerous to have pedestrians?
We do have a sidewalk. If we go back to the rendering, please, Lynn, if we can go back to our rendering, you don't have to only walk in the driveway. There is there's an opportunity to walk up here, Ryan, if you can chime in about, you know, some some of the connectivity that you expect, and one would have to walk up, you know, on our property and the pedestrian area that will be designated to the to the sidewalk. Do I think that having the stair and you know, the connectivity out to the sidewalk is is superior? I certainly do. We we all really like it. Ryan designed it that way purposely, and I think that when we were speaking to DBW, they were also supportive of that. That being said, there's this is an interesting, can we go back up to proposed Retail B zone for a second? That that shows us something interesting here. Just just click on that. So what you can see here, you see that little in the orange, right? We're number eight and 10. You see us in the dark green. And then Houston Lane. It's incorrect, but it's shown as it's shown as orange, but this, you know, we took this from a a town website, but it's not totally accurate. But you can see this little tail. It almost looks like an icicle hanging down in between Houston Lane and then the other property, and that's owned by our neighbors, and that is and that separates our land from town land. So to have access to the sidewalk requires their participation, and that has not been, that easement has not been granted.
Jackie, excuse me, if I could jump in, this is Ryan's author. And if you could go to the, go back to the DeAndrea site plan. Subsequent to the development of the rendering and with some revisions, we did introduce a sidewalk that runs along the western face of the building, between the building and what is labeled as Houston Lane on the map. And in fact, you see it hatched there just off the right of the word lane. That connects right to that central archway. In addition to the southern end of that, where you see the crosswalk at the two parking spots, obviously, as those two parking spots have been deleted, the continuity of the sidewalk is maintained, and there is not a crosswalk there. It is, in fact, a direct point of access from the archway at the building all the way into the sidewalk at the southerly end of the entry to the site from Houston Lane, or excuse me, from Heritage Hill.
So so you are proposing a sidewalk?
Yeah, there is, yeah. In addition to that one, which is on Heritage Hill.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I thought you meant one on the Jack Flynn. Talking about that connectivity point, so thank you.
Jack Flynn, Mrs. Kaufman, could you explain again what will be on that first floor of that building? What what
Oh, sure.
what will you have there?
Certainly. Let me just go back to my notes. There will be six units on the ground level, six residential units, one one-bedroom, and five two-bedroom units, and also a 315-square-foot commercial office space.
And the occupants of the office, will that be the the enterprise here itself, or is it going to be leased out?
It's the intention is to be used as a leasing office for this building, a real estate office for this building.
Thank you.
John Cris had a question on the parking changes.
Yes.
Could you go back to the map and show us exactly the change being made and the two going and the two being moved elsewhere?
Yes, Lynn, do you have the ability to do a screen share with me? Because something I received from our landscape architect this evening was a color version of that, which is easy to read. If not, let's just go to the newest plan, and I'll ask Lynn to.
Let's see. Try sharing your screen, and we'll see if it'll work. You could share, let's see if it'll, if you can. Let's see, um, try sharing your screen and we'll see if it'll work. You could share, let's see if it'll, if you can share yours.
Okay, can you see our, can you see that?
No. Okay.
Are you, let's, let me go back.
Hold on one second.
There we go. Is that up now?
Ye- yes.
Okay, um, this does not have the breakdown for the parking spaces. Let me try this. Are you able to see this? Black and white?
Yes, see this?
Okay, great. Lynn, uh, would you like to answer this question?
Uh, sure, um, if you look at the, um, I'll call it the front right corner of the building, there were the two parking spaces, or yep, right down there where your hand is, a little bit farther to the south. There were two parking spaces that we have now eliminated. And then we relocated one into the tier of parking directly behind the building. So that, right, now what we did there, we actually counterclockwise rotated that parking lot just a bit, and then slid it to the east. It actually worked out pretty good because it gives more room for screening. It actually takes the corner, the northeast corner of that parking lot and puts it now behind the garage. So, but that was kind of positive. But we still needed to find one more space. So going back to the front side of the building, but if you could, and then just come down the driveway, go along the north side, and then as soon as you turn the corner to go into the parking lot, we added one parallel space right where your hand is right there.
Okay, has the fire marshal seen these changes and is happy with them?
I personally have not shared with the fire marshal. I don't know if Jackie has.
No, the fire marshal has not commented on these. All of the, the lanes and the turning widths have all been respected, consistent with, um, the prior review and plan. The fire marshal's, uh, main concern is that they're able to make it down Houston Lane and able to take this turn here. So all of those distances that were originally shown have been respected, certainly.
And that's why I'm trying to approve that, and we have not changed that geometry with this revision.
So we would.
A question though, with, with the, um, additional parking space, it's a parallel spot at the corner of the building, you're making a sharp right turn. Uh, I'm just wondering about the ability of, um, safety equipment to navigate the right turn without hitting any vehicle that's there or hitting the, or avoiding the landscaping and so forth, in order to access the back of the building for safety purposes. That's where I'm going with this.
Um, well, actually, what we did here is we took out some of the curving. The, the space itself is longer at 22 feet. And then we have a transition, um, aprons, we'll call it. Now, we took out the curving to make this radius even easier to, to get around and get the space in and out. We could put back the curving, uh, to your point, to protect that vehicle should a much larger vehicle want to negotiate that turn. But the curb was there before, and that overall geometry hasn't changed. It'll be striped instead. But we can go back to curb if, if you think that's more appropriate.
Okay, also.
I'm sorry.
No, please go ahead.
As it certainly, we, uh, you know, we would be willing to accept a, a condition of approval. If the commission was so inclined, that would say that the site plan as proposed would meet, uh, the, uh, would meet the fire marshal's approval prior to any issuance of a building permit.
If I'm looking the lower left of the picture you have, uh, that seems to be the, uh, walkway you, uh, plan to put in. That sort of tail off to the left, that would be the sidewalk you were planning to put in?
Yes.
Where the parking spaces were going to be in front originally, and now they're not, what sort of landscaping are you intending for that area?
You can see here that there's, there's additional plants of the same design, um, in this, in this area. Otherwise here, this will all be grass. And then there's tight landscaping up against the building. It's consistent with the, uh, with the prior approval, with the, with the prior set that we shared with you in August and September.
So the, it seemed to be reasonably slight changes to the landscaping plan would be similar types of native vegetation, similar types of vegetation that you're already going to have on site?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, Ms. Kaufman, um, maybe I misunderstood, but you, you remarked to the fact that you, you were in discussions with the neighbors concerning certain restrictive covenants, private agreement, which, you know, we had talked about in previous meeting and, you know, fine with us. But then were you saying that we could impose those conditions instead, or did I misunderstand?
No, 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 I, I just wanted to confirm to you that while, because we, we had attempted in good faith to, uh, share with our neighbors that we thought a very reasonable solution to, to the issues that remain, which really has to do with phase two. Phase two did not have a site plan and a special permit, um, application attached to it. There was only a concept plan for discussion, and that was not, that.
Okay, so to interrupt you, so the entire private agreement discussion had to do with phase two?
Well, really, it, it did have to do with phase two, but it also, it, I can understand that it also had to do with phase one as we started to draft it. And certainly, we would still be willing to grant that to phase one. It's a, our neighbors desired it. Right, and, and we would then extend that over to phase two at the time that we bring that application. We think that we can.
Okay, okay, got it, got it, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, uh, Ms. Kaufman, are you, are you, are you all set?
I am. Is Mr. O'Rourke with us yet?
Oh, right.
He is, um.
He's still muted.
No, well, yeah, he is.
Can you dial in, Michael? Uh, Michael, go into the chat. We need to include, uh, we, we can certainly move on, but I'm going to, um.
Yeah, he's, he's only here with his, um, with his computer screen, so it's not capturing it.
Lynn, I thought there was an ability on Zoom calls to dial in via your cell phone.
I, right, also too. Do you see that in the chat, Michael, that there is a dial-in number available? Can you try that? Thank you. It's 1-646-558-8656. That's 1-646-558-8656. There he goes. Thank you all.
Does he need to enter the? I'm going to place the meeting ID, and there he is. Can you hear us, Mr. O'Rourke? Oh, there he is.
Yes, let me.
Oh, great, hello? Oh boy.
Well, I've moved, I've moved the cell phone.
Okay.
Mute, mute your computer screen so you only have your telephone on the audio, because they're too close to each other. That's why you have the ping noise.
That better?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies for the, the, uh, the delays and the interference.
Uh, well, thanks for joining us now, Michael. If you could please, I was just, we were going over the special permit criteria and would like for you to summarize our position about, uh, our parking, so we can just refresh the record.
Uh, well, uh, we, we concentrated more on the, the traffic. I believe Mr. DeAndred worked on the, the parking part. But we did a, a traffic study, um, in April. We submitted that in April. And we had counted traffic in February, so we counted pre-pandemic traffic. What we found was that the, uh, the project as proposed, by the time you did the net trip generation, the project would generate, uh, approximately four vehicle trips in the morning and seven vehicle trips in the afternoon peak hour. And that there would be, uh, no changes in level of service. We were looking at level service A and B at the intersection of Houston Lane and Heritage Hill. And there'd be no, uh, no, no real change in vehicle delay and minimal impact on, of this project on the traffic at Heritage Hill Lane, or Heritage Hill, I should say.
Thank you very much. I know that others, uh, you know, have cited that, if our neighbors have said they've had different experiences with this. Certainly, we, uh, we've done our counts, we've provided our data, and we have to rely on that. So, uh, we offer that to you in, in support of our special permit, and think that this is, um, this, and this building with 12 units can be safely, uh, accommodated on the roadway.
Yes, no, no, no change, no, no, uh, no change in level of service and minimal impact.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Can I ask you just to stay on, on the line as we continue this hearing?
Certainly.
Additional questions or testimony that will lead you to reply to? Thank you. I, I don't have any further testimony to offer at the moment, and, uh, but if there are any further questions, if me or our team, we're happy to answer those for you now.
Okay, commissioners, before we move on to the public, any, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, let's, um, let's open this up to the public input. Who would like to address this application, please?
If you, if you know you want to address the application, can you just put your hand up in the screen? So we can do it in an orderly fashion? Okay, so we've got. There's a Jamie Stevens. She should be unmuted. There's her. There you go.
Right, thank you. So I think I'll, Commissioner, good one, if it's okay with you, um, and, and with the rest of the, of the committee or the commission that, uh, as I start, um, I'll turn this over to Attorney Green, who's also representing, uh, the Owen Oak Association, Inc., which is a condo association to the north of the, uh, proposed project.
O'Rourke, please proceed, thank you.
Sure, so, and I'll, I'll keep my comment short, and hopefully Attorney Green will as well, uh, so that we can keep moving as long. I think a lot has been covered, um, but, um, we'll try and be as efficient as possible with everyone's time this evening. So, um, I, I'm, I'm president of the Board of the Owen Oak Association, uh, we're, um, the condo association in the north. We have 165 units, uh, just over 300 residents, uh, in the association. We have, uh, basically, we submitted a letter into the commission, uh, this afternoon. We, uh, the lateness wasn't, uh, due on our part. I think our conversations, uh, with the applicant have dragged on, uh, beyond what we would have expected, uh, and so we would have submitted this previously, uh, in prior months. But, um, those are, are substantive conversations didn't really happen until earlier this month, to where we could, we could conclude those, or at least, uh, have to come before you at this late stage of the process, uh, with our, with our views. So, um, at this point, our view is that we would, uh, request that you deny the application for the zoning change from residential B to retail B. We don't think the zoning change provides any benefit to the town in New Canaan. As I said, we've been in some brief conversations and discussions with the applicant. And as we learned more information about phase one and phase two, uh, and the number of units that were proposed, our, our board, after discussion, uh, came to the conclusion that the number of units being proposed in both phase one and phase two, uh, is just too large for the topography, uh, and the, um, the, the, the land, the, the two, the, the various plots of land within Houston Lane. So you're going from 11 current units up to, uh, in phase one, uh, 12. And then what we've, we've understood, what we understand in phase two would be 20. So it would be 32 units, so you'd be almost tripling the number of units in Houston Lane. And in our, in our view, that's just too many for that, um, for the, for, for those, uh, various pieces of land. We, uh, we were, we, uh, communicated this to the applicant and, um, and their attorney, and we were told that, uh, these number, their current application was non-negotiable. And so any, um, support that we may have animated about, uh, keeping this residential and allowing the zoning change, we have withdrawn. Um, and as I said earlier, uh, the simple fact of the matter is that the number of units is just too large for the, uh, the very, the available space within Houston Lane. And the, uh, diminishment, de minimis amount of commercial, which is being proposed, is just, just attempting to adjust the, the zone, uh, for the benefit of maximizing the number of units. And so that's not necessarily, that's not necessary, given the size of the land and what it can accommodate. Um, and so we don't believe that, uh, the zone change is warranted. What has also been talked about this evening, uh, is the potential for phase two. Uh, and although that may not be before you, I think you can't ignore the fact that it may be a possibility. And that if you do, um, allow the zone change for units, uh, number eight and 10 Houston Lane, uh, that could also transpire down further Houston Lane to the, an additional zone change. And, and you can't guarantee that that won't be developed into something more retail and more traffic than what currently has been proposed by the applicant. Just from a, uh, practical standpoint, uh, and, and looking in the prior discussion that was going on about parking, uh, and sidewalks, uh, you know, the, the application seems to have to shoehorn a lot of pieces into a very small space between eight and 10. And, and again, that only reiterates our view that the, that the current proposal for eight and 10 is just too large. Our, our recommendation or request in our conversation with the applicant, rather than 12 units for, uh, numbers eight and 10, was somewhere between eight, uh, sorry, for eight and 10, Houston Lane was only to have eight to 10 units, which we think would allow, uh, greater flexibility in terms of parking, uh, as well as sidewalks and, and access to Heritage Hill Road. And in, uh, phase two, uh, where they're proposing 20 units, uh, our, our request was something in the neighborhood of 12 to 15. So I, I think we were being very, um, thoughtful in terms of allowing the residential to, and the density to increase. But what they're currently proposing, and the reason they're proposing it, the zoning change, we don't think is warranted. The last two points I'll quickly make with regards to shoehorning that parking, in, in, in the phase one proposal, where you're going to have two-bedroom units in, in, uh, numbers eight and 10 Houston Lane. Uh, from our experience, you may end up having a multi-general, multi-generational, uh, tenant within one of those two-bedroom units. So you may have a parent, uh, and then two adult children that are living in a two-bedroom, um, unit, which could actually mean that you may have three vehicles next needed to have parking, um, in one of those situations. And we have, uh, situations like that within the Owen Oak Associations here. So I say that from a, from a practical standpoint, uh, and then I think. And then I think the other thing that you need to contemplate from a parking perspective is, as much as we, the generation that we all grew up in, a pickup truck was not a residential vehicle. It's becoming more and more so. So when you look at parking spaces, you have to think about a Ford, you know, F-250, being someone's personal vehicle and allowing the parking spaces to be able to facilitate that. So when you're trying to wedge in 11 or 12 spaces into a small area, it may not actually practically work. So just something from our experience here up the road to consider for the Commission. And so as I kind of said, we just think that the proposal is too large and doesn't warrant, and the fact that you're only requesting the zoning change to maximize the number of residential doesn't warrant that large of scale of development, both in Phase One and in Phase Two. So those are the comments from the Board of the Association. We appreciate your time. We would have come earlier, had our conversations with the applicant been more substantive between June and October. Unfortunately, they weren't, and so we were presenting our views at this point in time. With that, I'll turn, Lynn, if it's okay, over to Attorney Green to address the letter that he submitted to the Commission as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Gross, and it's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of the Owen Oak Association. First of all, I'd like to thank the Commission for your generous patience, and I know, I appreciate the time and the continuances that you allowed. And I also want to thank the applicant, because we had, I think, we engaged in really good-faith negotiations and attempted to reach some sort of an understanding on this. But unfortunately, those discussions broke down. And I think the source of the failure of our discussions really rises from the problem with this application. And the real problem with this application is that my client, and I don't represent certainly Attorney Lampert, and I don't represent Lynn Corson, we all wanted to work with the applicant. But unfortunately, the fundamental failure is that this is sort of a tortured use of a zone change, and it's a tortured use of a residence, I'm sorry, of a retail B zone. And my clients, and I think in fairness, Todd Lampert and Lynn Corson, we all have concerns about the potential of rezoning these properties. And, you know, we don't take great comfort in sort of making it smaller and having it only apply to eight and 10 versus, you know, eight through 14 Houston Lane. Because when you look at a zone change, first of all, you can't condition a zone change. So as you consider this, as the Commission, as part of your planning function, you really have to think about what the potential uses are for this property. And a retail B zone really creates a whole constellation of potential commercial uses on these properties. And my client is justifiably concerned, as are the other neighbors, with the potential for other uses, other unintended consequences of this zone change. And Connecticut law says that you can't condition a zone change. So while these applications are both before you, they really rise and fall independently. And certainly, as a planning function, I don't think that it was ever a goal or an objective of this Commission, and I've never heard it expressed, to expand the sort of the retail commercial use out of town or to expand the existing commercial zone. I won't go through our argument on the plan of conservation and development. You have our document in writing. You've heard Attorney Kaufman. But we really disagree on that, and it was never, it really is not a fair conclusion that it was ever a planning goal to expand this zone into this residential B zone. I note that the applicant, you know, sees this plan as residential, and we appreciate that. But in assessing the zone change, they never really presented you with, for example, a traffic study that has truly considered the zone change. They gave you a traffic study that really looks at, initially, it looked at the, it really considered the 12 units proposed for eight and 10 Houston Lane. The applicant, then subsequently, there was a supplement written by Mr. Galante that sort of said that it's a similar use. But they never really said what the potential was, if any, one of these other uses that are approved, that can be used, I'm sorry, can be applicable in a retail B zone. I'd like to remind you that under your regulations, and while Attorney Kaufman said that there are all these safeguards, there really aren't, because most of these uses are subject only to site plan approval. So as you know, this Commission performs with respect to site plans more of an administrative function to assure that the proposed development meets the standards of your regulations as opposed to a special permit, which permits this Commission to sort of apply other safeguards in terms of character harmony and that sort of thing. So resident, retail B zone says, "uses permitted with site plan approval." And it's interesting, I looked at the history of this regulation, and it appears to go back to 2013. But in the uses that were permitted, the order of the uses was, you know, retail businesses, banks, restaurants, outside dining, food shops, retail, general medical offices. Now, here is, here is a very critical point. I don't think that anyone can fairly argue, it cannot be fairly argued, that it was the intention of this Commission to adopt Section 4.3 Retail B Zone to accommodate, as a mixed-use, a project that has just 315 feet of office. And admittedly, tonight, the applicant conceded that the point of that office is really to act as a rental or administrative office for the rental use on the site. But to have really 315 feet of office, administrative office really, and 12,000 feet of residential. And that is just not, the retail B zone was just never meant to be that. And in the language under purpose, it says, "The retail B zone is intended to provide areas adjacent to the pedestrian-oriented retail A zone, where parking shall be provided on-site, yet where buildings are located close to the sidewalk for pedestrian access." Now, here is another problem. It is also the purpose, and I'm reading 4.3A, "It is also the purpose of this district to allow for residential use of upper floors, particularly in existing structures, so that such buildings, which may be historic or architecturally significant, can contribute to the smaller-unit housing resources, thereby providing for diversity in housing choices and opportunity." And that's not what's being done here. What's being done here is an attempt to have this property rezoned to essentially achieve a higher-density residential use than could otherwise be achieved in a residential zone. And it's just such a tortured use of this regulation. And it kind of gets worse, because if you look under the uses in 4.3C7, it says, "General and medical offices as permitted in retail A zone." And then in eight, it says, "Residential dwelling units as permitted in retail A zone." And if you look at the retail A zone regulation, it says C, it says six, so I'm sorry, 4.2C6. It says, "General and medical offices, provided that, offices shall not be permitted on the first floor of any building." And the B retail zone says, "Offices as it is permitted in the retail A." So in retail A, you can't have an office on the ground floor. So it would follow that in retail B, you can't have an office on the ground floor. It then says, residents, I'm sorry, in the retail A zone, it says, and this is 10, this is 4.2C10, it says, "Residential dwelling units, provided that, no such unit shall be permitted on the first floor of any building." So it's clear that in adopting these regulations, the Commission was doing something creative. You were creating housing opportunities by allowing residential over retail. The A retail zone was really a pedestrian-access zone. The retail B zone, you know, required some parking on-site, but it would be adjacent to the A zone. But in each instance, you really contemplated a combination of uses. Now, I recognize that in 4.3D, it says, "Uses requiring special permit." It says, "Dwelling units contained within a mixed-use development of multifamily dwellings." And then it says, "And other permitted uses provided that." And in the retail B zone, you relaxed, you relaxed the size of the unit. So you allowed up to 1,500 feet. But there's nowhere that says, there's no specific authorization to put the residential use on the ground floor or the office use on the ground floor. And while there are sections that talk about your ability to reconfigure under certain circumstances that grants discretion to this Commission to reconfigure, I have two comments on that. And first of all, the applicant never really asked for it, didn't ask for it specifically. But B, I think that may run into problems in zoning law with the concept of uniformity. And I've spent a considerable amount of time on this. There is quite a body of law that says that there has to be uniformity in regulations such that you can understand in reading the regulations what is permitted and what is not permitted. And really, waivers or relaxation of regulations is really frowned on under the law. And really, waivers and variances are really fall in the province of a zoning board of appeals. But once again, my essential point initially was that this was, our discomfort, and the discomfort of my clients, what they were really looking for was to negotiate a private restrictive covenant that said that if we allow this really, this kind of thing to happen, this zone change to happen, we need at least a private covenant that will assure that a certain level of density, that will assure that the property would only be used for residential purposes, that would assure that if you had to have this really nominal commercial use, that it would be the smallest amount of commercial use reasonably required to establish the use in this zone. Now, unfortunately, I mean, I believe that the applicant is proposing 12 units, because I don't believe they could get more units on this property. And unfortunately, they weren't really willing to negotiate from that plan. They did, in fact, offer to only have, you know, this application applied to the one site. But we took no comfort in that, because, you know, we really wanted to bring some certainty and finality to this, negotiate a covenant that would restrict it to strictly residential use. But the fundamental issue was that it really does, this should not be a retail B zone for this use. And really, what the applicant should be doing is probably creatively seeking some sort of an amendment to your residential zone regulations that, under certain circumstances, allows a higher density of development under the conditions that this Commission could deem reasonable and appropriate. But this is really the wrong vehicle. Certainly, and just to, just to respond to a couple of comments, I don't think that there's any incentive to increase the amount of retail space in your town in terms of the policies, or in any town at this point. As you were aware, there is a huge oversupply of retail space, and that problem seems to be increasing with the, obviously, the growth of online purchasing and with COVID and everything else that's happening in the world. There really is not a need for more commercial space of that kind. And so that, I mean, that pushes against the notion of a zone change again. I, once again, the traffic study, and I spoke to Todd Lampert today, and he can elaborate. He had real issues, and I'm sure he can talk to you about it. And I apologize, Todd, if I'm stealing your thunder here. But he suggested that the traffic study really wasn't comprehensive. It did not take into account the fact that there is a parking deck that apparently is approved for the Locust Street site that would generate more traffic at that intersection. He pointed out that there is a traffic light close by, and there wasn't really, and the intersection was not really considered in the traffic study. I would suggest to you that before this property is rezoned, a more robust traffic study that says that if this property is, if these properties are dedicated to the zone change which is proposed, here are the potential traffic loads, here are the potential amount of trips. Another thing that I might point out is, and I'm not sure why, and I'm sure that the applicant can fill this in, but I'm surprised that with this awkward intersection, one concern that this Commission would have would be sightlines. And I did not see a sightline analysis or a speed analysis. And while the applicant has said that the, that the increase in traffic from the proposed 12 units is modest, there really, it's obviously an intensification of the use of that site. And there is nothing that would satisfy this Commission that cars entering or leaving the site could do so safely. And you obviously have to have a speed analysis and a sightline analysis to establish that. And once again, that should be established for any potential use in the zone. And I think in the fair exercise of the jurisdiction of this Commission, that would be information that you'd want to have. I question on the, I question on the development. I note that there is a 50-foot, and this is in the grid. I think an interesting question that this Commission should ask the applicant, and I'd be happy to ask it now through you, Mr. Chair, is, on the site plan, through you, to the traffic engineer or to Attorney Kaufman, is where the applicant develops 50 feet of frontage? And this just occurred to me tonight when Attorney Kaufman pointed out this peninsula of land that the Owen Oak Association owns. And when I went and looked on the existing conditions site plan, to my untrained eye, it does not appear that the applicant actually has 50 feet of frontage on a public road. I think it appears to me that the entry to Houston Lane is less than 50 feet wide. I question whether this site can then accommodate this zone. And while there is a pre-existing drive, can I ask that question through you, Mr. Chair?
I'll, once, your remarks. Ms. Kaufman, do you want to answer it now?
Yes, we've addressed that with staff and the town attorney. As these three properties will be merged, Uh, as these three properties will be merged, and I say three properties, that's inclusive of Houston Lane because that is its own titled property, uh, that the opening to Houston Lane, while that is a private road, it's also private, we call it a private road, it's functioned as a private road. It really is privately held land. Um, and it was determined that the frontage did exist at the mouth of, uh, Houston Lane, which actually is deceiving because while the roadway is paved of a certain width, the actual parcel property is, is much longer and larger than that and exceeds 50 feet. In fact, let me pull this up, I can tell you it is, I'm looking at it here now. It's not, it's not identified on this plan. But if you, uh, go to the proposed change of zone plan or even the others, you can see what the length is. And prior to our filing of this application, we spent a considerable amount of time drilling down on that to ensure that, that, uh, that piece was complied with. And it was, uh, if you can confirm for me, uh, Lynn, that both you and, uh, town council confirmed that we met that standard.
Yes, we spent, uh, many, many months, I think, just trying to establish that fact. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, I thank you for that. Uh, so, uh, you'll just bear with me for one moment. So once again, then, and can I just ask, was there in fact a sightline, um, analysis or speed analysis done in the vicinity of where the proposed private land meets the town road?
Mr. Ower, can you answer that question for us, please? I know that, or, uh, or Lynn, from a sightline perspective?
Uh, yes, the, the, to, to the, um, because it's an existing driveway that we're really not changing. Uh, we, we did not perform a speed analysis or a sightline analysis. I will point out that we did do an accident analysis for that, for the, for Houston at Heritage Hill. And for a three-year period from 2017 to 2019, there were no accidents at all. So there, there was not, uh, as we were doing the traffic study, there, there did not appear to be a need to do those studies. We're talking about an, an existing driveway onto, or an existing street, actually, onto another existing street.
So, uh, so thank you. So I would just submit to the commission that what's happening is you have an existing private driveway that's actually referred to as a private driveway. It's being proposed to be rezoned to a, uh, retail B zone. The use of the site, the use of two of the properties right at the moment, uh, have been applied, as you know, for 12 units. Therefore significantly intensifying the use of those two properties, eight and 10. But certainly there is the potential, as I've indicated, um, for all of the other uses under four point three C. You therefore have a change of use. It is a private drive that is fronting on a town road. And certainly with the commission's familiarity with the sort of the geometry, having seen it in the field, but certainly on the plans, it is a tricky intersection, um, for any one of these intense uses. And, you know, for those reasons, and certainly I think that our, um, submission to the commission today really speaks for itself regarding the inconsistency with the plan of conservation in development in terms of the zone change. For those reasons, um, we would urge the commission, uh, to deny, um, both applications. Um, I, I just also have a, a note that, um, and I just want to, I, I would like to just, uh, share this thought with the commission for your future planning. I note that, um, the town planner in her report speaks to, um, the establishment of a building line. And the fact that the building line, in this case, unless you specify a building line, um, then the building line is essentially the property line on the back of the property. Uh, I find that, um, I talked earlier to you about, um, the uniformity requirement in zoning regulations. That suggests to me that on a case-by-case basis, um, this commission may, under your regulations, it appears, under your regulations, establish building lines on a property by property basis. I think that that may create a uniformity issue where, once again, all properties in a particular zone, um, need to be treated uniformly with, uh, definitive standards. And I think that, um, sort of having a, having a, what I'll call floating building line is determined by the commission, uh, might, uh, run afoul of that. I, you might want to, um, I, I would urge the commission to maybe take that up, if not on this application in the future with attorney Bloom and attorney Gelderman, uh, because I think it, once again, um, creates a uniformity issue. But, um, I, I want to thank you, um, and, uh, I know on behalf of Mr. Stevens as well for hearing us. I don't know if you have any questions for me, um, or for Mr. Stevens this evening.
If there's any questions for Mr. Stevens or Mr. Green? No, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodwin, if, if I may, the building last question, um, I'll respond generally to Mr. Green.
Ms. Kaufman?
Later, but, yeah.
Yeah, why don't, can we just?
Sure, of course.
You're going to build a list as we go along. I don't, this, this shouldn't be a debate. Who else from the public would, uh, like to address this application?
I would.
Ms. Finley?
Yeah, yes. In, in June and July, I wrote letters to you, to your commission, and I'm hoping that you did receive them. I'm a single-issue person. This, I'm speaking on behalf of all the preservationists who have enjoyed seeing those two houses, eight and 10 Houston Lane. They're historic houses in downtown, which is quite rare. And I think, uh, your, the, your plan of conservation and development talks about your responsibility toward preserving these, the heritage and the historic structures, uh, in town. I think that they often given short shrift. However, these two from, uh, the mid 19th century are very, are very charming and they add to the visual delight of New Canaan. Furthermore, I think they were given short shrift by attorney Kaufman when she talked about the design and the condition. Uh, I find that the design is terrific, especially the one with the gingerbread. And the condition is something that can always be dealt with. It does not mean that it's a throwaway building. A preservation architect would know how to combine these buildings, perhaps on a single lot, and add housing in between and behind them and come up with a very, uh, attractive solution to, to the problem of demolition of two historic buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much to you. Uh, who else from the public like to address the commission? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. My name's Todd Lampert. I'm an attorney at Lampert, too, in Ruchi, but I'm here today on behalf of the Main Street Group, which is property at 46 Main Street. I am, uh, my driveway is directly across from the lane that's in question here. And, you know, I don't take any joy in, in joining in, uh, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Green's objection, but, but I feel I, I do have to. We did try to negotiate in good faith and I was optimistic we'd get to a resolution, but we did not. My big concern, without repeating everything that Mr. Green and Mr. Stevens did, is, is the traffic that flows out of that area. Right now, on any given morning or afternoon, uh, it is backed up past my driveway. And I, I just think that the traffic study that was done did not consider the traffic flow going towards, uh, Main Street. In fact, if you look at the, the study, uh, it, it specifically does not address the light at Heritage Hill or Main Street, which is where a majority of the traffic flow goes. So I'm not sure how you do a traffic study and don't see the impact when one of the most major lights in town is right there and it was just ignored. And, and the other thing that was ignored in the traffic study is what happens as if and when the second tier of that deck that was approved is ever finished. And it was approved. And in fact, I think the traffic study was done by the same person who, uh, did, did the lane. So there should have been some knowledge that that's a potential and how it would impact not only my driveway, but the light at Heritage Hill. So I think the traffic study i- is definitely insufficient at a minimum. And, and then, other than that, I join in everything that Mr. Stevens and Mr. Green stated earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lampert. Who else from the public would like to address this application, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Lynn Corson had asked to address before.
Right. Is she there? I don't see her.
She is, and I just unmuted her.
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I just want to reiterate because I know I have spoken at the past, uh, meetings and voiced my opinion that I did support the, the plans that were presented to me, both by the applicant and what's been presented to the commission and that my opposition was changing both the lane and 12 and 14 to residential B because as everybody has pointed out, that just, uh, opened up a lot of issues as far as the magnitude, um, and the use of that. And I guess from tonight's meeting that I'm hearing that, um, that has actually been taken off the table and it won't be considered as retail B. And I just, this considered that a, a positive note and just wanted to voice my opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Corson. Who else would, uh, like to address this application? Let, let me know if you see anybody else, please.
So, okay, so, um, most people here are not on camera, so, uh, hold on one second. Nancy, do you want to address this meeting? Or Angela Abate, do you want to address this item? Or are you here for one of the other items on the agenda? And then I phone. Otherwise, um, Ms. Lavostik, are you here for this item? No, okay. So then, um,
Good.
Yeah, I mean, the, everyone else has either spoken or has, uh,
Okay, great. Uh, Mrs. Kauf, uh, Ms. Kaufman, uh, any concluding remarks?
Uh, yes, please, I'd just like the opportunity to respond to, uh, some of the public comment we just received. Uh, none, none of which is new. We have, uh, you know, engaged, as attorney Green, uh, mentioned in good faith and I think meaningful dialogue over the last, um, several weeks. But I want to address some of the comments he said specifically and also, um, those of, uh, Mr. Lampert and, uh, Ms. Green. Uh, with regard to the question about the historic nature of the, of the dwellings. In June, I'm sorry, in July, we responded to the letters to the commission with a memo. And we did actually, again, before we, uh, filed these applications, uh, studied with the historic district if the property was listed on the, I'm sorry, with the, uh, historical society, with, whether it was on the state or national registries of historical places. And the, and also we checked with the historical society and they were not on any of those lists. And the historical society confirmed it is also not listed on any local historic registry or database. So I, I certainly meant no respect to, uh, to the existing buildings or to the good and, um, very meaningful work that, uh, Ms. Finley and the historical society does in, um, in our community. But, um, specifically, we, uh, did look into that early, uh, to ensure that there would be no conflict. And that was, uh, and submitted that memo to the commission on 7/28 for your reference. The, uh, to, trying to just go back through point by point. We are, uh, as we mentioned, we are removing 12 and 14, uh, from the zoning change. I understand that doesn't necessarily give, uh, comfort to our neighbors. But the other thing that, uh, they've articulated, what doesn't do is it doesn't give them any comfort about what might be coming next. And certainly they will have to, um, you know, further engage with, uh, with the applicant, with the property owner when other and future development plans come along. And we hope to be able to use this as, use this learning opportunity, uh, moving forward. So, uh, we can design whatever comes next appropriately and, uh, you know, and well in advance. Certainly, we think 12 is the right size, is, is one unit, is one unit enough to, we'll be willing to do that. Certainly, to go to something like 11 units, we can go to 11 units. But going to eight units is not viable. It's, it's certainly not an option here. And moving into a restriction on density for properties that have not been properly studied for phase two, uh, is not a meaningful, uh, it's, it's just not a meaningful exercise right now for many different reasons. Um, and that's why we're removing the future, the, that discussion and deferring that to another day. We're moving 12 and 14 from the zone change, map change before you tonight. And we think that presents a, uh, a very meaningful solution to some of those problems. The safeguards that I was referring to and that attorney Green said are not really, or don't really exist, is that really the sites themselves are what's self-regulating, especially in a retail B environment. And so I, I think it's, it's not fair to say that this doesn't qualify or a traffic study does not take into consideration the, a, a parade of horribles of what could be there, the most intense use, because the size of a property is really what's self-regulating. And it limits the size of a building. It limits the location of zoning setbacks. It limits your parking requirements for those uses, change and increase based on whatever underlying uses you have. And that certainly is another self-regulating limitation. That's not just true of this zone, but certainly of any zone. And we'd be remiss not to, um, not to discuss that part, you know, parking is, is the safeguard. Um, a, a, a study of what ifs is not really needed because we're also, this is not a zone change request in a vacuum. It's a zone change accompanied by a site plan and special permit application with, uh, with, with real detail, uh, for you. And the, uh, I think that you can, uh, fairly safely rely on that. And this applicant is ready to pull, pull a building permit immediately on, um, on these, on this application that's before you, on these properties. The, uh, there was discussion, procedural discussion points that attorney Green raised. And I, I can tell you in good faith, then, I would hope that, um, Ms. Brooks, I mean, can support me here that, uh, we actually spent several months, uh, prior to the filing of this application, going through the retail B, uh, the retail B regulation in really, really fine detail. And not only between the two of us, but I know that, um, she was also conferring with, uh, with your town council on that. When we talk about with the, uh, is this, is this use permitted? Is it permitted to even have these items on the first floor? I really pointed two things is, uh, number one, the grade changes in the building. Uh, we look to the height, the height absolutely works, but we do have parking below. And then on one side, and then on the other side of the building, uh, what appears to be the first floor are residential units and then the small commercial space. In looking at the special permit, certainly you have, uh, the, uh, the standard that Mr. Green read into the record, which is the, the introduction to the zone itself. But there is no express limitation, and it was confirmed, uh, by, by staff that there's no express limitation against having units on the first floor, um, or, or what is perceived on the first floor on that side of the building, on the westerly side of the building, um, or having that office space there. Um, and that certainly also goes to you too. There are your regulations, you are the, you are the ultimate arbiter of those, uh, regulations. But there are also, this has been reviewed by you before on 42 Forest Street where you did permit, uh, units to be located on, um, on the first floor there. There's, and there's a combination of, uh, retail on one side and then units that are townhomes on the other. And it was important to the commission in that application that there was some under, underground parking. Um, there, there was a slight calculation, difference in calculation of height there. That's irrelevant because we don't need a special permit here. But regardless of that, you found that, uh, that that was appropriate in a retail B zone, uh, before. And so I had also vetted that issue on a, a prior application, um, as had you. The, uh, so I do not think that there's a procedural defect. We certainly do ask for the special permit in our application. It was properly noticed and we identify in that special permit. And we identify in that special permit request the location of the units as first floor units and also the office as first floor, at least as it deals with the westerly, the westerly side of the building. And then on the easterly side of the building, one could interpret that they are located on upper floors. In any event, we did spend several weeks ensuring that that request was properly, properly worded and that we hadn't missed any special permit requests. So we hope that you would agree with that interpretation as well. But that certainly was not an oversight by us. The, Mr. Stevens was talking about design requirements in the regulations and realities of different vehicles that residents in New Canaan Drive, the size, and I, parking. We have not, I would like to just clarify for the record that the parking plan that's before you and the circulation plan is completely conforming to the regulations has been vetted by DPW Engineering and the Fire Commercial at least regards to the geometry, not the location of the two new spaces. But we took all of those prior conversations into consideration in the redesign and we don't expect an issue with those. So the design requirements meet the regulation. The circulation that driveway, we call it a driveway, private road, whatever you want to call it, Houston Lane itself has been widened in certain points to accommodate emergency vehicles. And there aren't, I don't believe there are any compact spaces that are depicted as part of this plan. And certainly, there is a reasonable this factor. When one engages in a lease, they have to find a product, a housing product that is right for them. If they drive an oversized vehicle and it's not going to, there's nowhere safe to park their car, this might not be the place for them. But all I can say to you is that from a design standpoint, we meet all of the regulations and dealing with, discussing hypothetical step point, I think it's not a useful exercise. We talked a little bit about the comments about relaxing size and location. We certainly asked for that. And I also point out something I don't know that we discussed in the retail B zone. Have to go back to this and sorry, the uses requiring special permit. D says, "In addition to alterations, you, the commission may increase or decrease density and alter layout requirements based on special or unusual lot area, shape or topography, density and layout, neighboring uses," and so on. So we have laid out in our application materials how we believe that we have, you know, met these, these requirements. Looking here, yep, 3D1. D1D has been asked for with regard to the setback, which we no longer need. I know that's something Attorney Green mentioned. He talked about the building line. So I, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, we had asked for a front yard setback adjustment. And we no longer, we no longer need that, that adjustment. So that one of D1, 1D for the purposes of a front yard setback is not necessary because we own Houston Lane. So we don't need that relief as these will be merged. But again, we had spent a considerable amount of time with staff and staff with town council about understanding what the building line was. They had conferences with DPW. So we felt confident making that request and felt that it was necessary because at the time that we had filed this application due to COVID and the inability to get into, get certain title records that were necessary, we couldn't accomplish that. But we did not want to wait much longer as we could start this conversation. So we filed it with that particular special permit request and that is no longer necessary for the purposes of the front yard setback. Traffic light, Mr. O'Rourke is here. I'm going to, if you have any further comments about traffic later, the accusation that the traffic, the traffic report was not comprehensive. I welcome them. You know, we certainly think that it was very comprehensive. They've been out to the site multiple times. And what we've learned about the parking deck is that the funding that was necessary, the grant that was necessary to build that has not been, has not been issued to the town. And therefore, there is no prospect for that to be built. While it may have your approval, it doesn't have the funding to be built. Perhaps will be built. It may be, but I don't know what the procedure is to resuscitate that approval or that structure.
Yes.
Do you have anything to offer on any of those points, Mr. O'Rourke?
No, you are correct about the parking deck, that there is definitely a funding issue. If I could go back just briefly to a couple of the comments by Mr. Lampert. He mentioned that right now, he has vehicles going back past his driveway. So it's an existing condition. And I would remind, remind the commission that in our traffic study that we submitted, we talked about a trip generation, total number of trips, total number of net trips of four vehicles in the morning and seven vehicles in the afternoon. So this project would add one vehicle to Houston Lane and then to Heritage Hill of one vehicle every 15 minutes in the morning and approximately one vehicle every eight minutes in the evening to what is already an existing traffic flow. And I would point out that while we've observed the operations of the existing, of the signalized intersection at Heritage Hill, Main Street, and observe the vehicle queues. We observed them back in February when we did the counts. We observed them most recently last week during both the morning and afternoon peak periods. And when the signal turned green for the Heritage Hill approach, all the vehicles that were in the queue, both left and right turners cleared the intersection. So it's not, it's really not a problem.
Thank you. The, we think that this is a great project. We think that we can deliver both a product that is in demand and that will enhance the living experience in downtown New Canaan. We have a property owner, a developer who is a New Canaan resident and, you know, not a developer in the traditional sense of several of those you see in town and truly comes to, comes to this commission with good faith and with a product that he thinks will enhance downtown living. And just because he thinks that will, that will achieve, it doesn't mean it will and has invested in a team that has helped to execute this vision. And we truly think that it is, but both applications are consistent with the town plan of development. Certainly, this commission on several occasions and through its subcommittees have spent time exploring different ways to meet the goals of the town plan and both preserve the quality and character of both downtown and New Canaan and also take it into the future. And this application certainly has its eye on the future in the way that it was designed. Again, the applicant is, is a citizen of New Canaan, looks to be a good neighbor. We've tried on numbers. Can we bring it down one? Either if the commission thinks that that is enough, we would concede to 11, 11 units here, keeping with the same massing, but just re-designing parts of the interior. But we think that this absolutely meets it. And it takes the, it is going to take underutilized property, property that is on the fringe of the downtown and to really move it into the future with an appropriate and modestly sized, modestly sized resident, residentially minded development. Just because the zone is called retail B does not mean that that is, that's the end, that it just should be retail. In the same way that the residential B zone has a series of uses that are not, that are, that are not residential. I think that there are, we have a confluence of zoning zones here that meet and that there are, there are menu of choices to see smart development and a smart, a smart and thoughtful expansion of the downtown and to create opportunities that will not only enhance this particular property and tax base, but also creates opportunity to reinvest pedestrian activity in and around the downtown by foot because we're bringing more people to the downtown. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions or any of our.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Commissioners or Ms. Avney, any last questions? My intent is to close this hearing. So if there is any points of information you'd still like, now is your chance. Commissioners or the town planner, Mr. Chris?
Yes, I'm going to bring up one of the points that Mr. Green brought up regarding parking and the striping. One thing I've noticed, if you've ever parked in the Railway Depot lot, that there's not a lot of space within those stripes. You compare that, let's say, to the transfer station, much wider stripes. So I'm wondering what sort of striping is intended by the applicant for the parking, especially the grade parking? And just wondering how narrow or wide that is and access and so forth.
Mr. Dandrea, would you please answer that question for Mr. Chris?
Yeah, sure. The parking spaces are nine by 18, but what's more important is that your aisle width is 23. And that gives a good amount of back out space to negotiate in and out of the parking space. And actually more than some of the other towns and cities in the area.
Thank you.
Ms. Avney?
I just have one quick comment on, with respect to the building line. And we went back, we went back on this topic multiple times between the town attorney. But the building line is only referenced in the commercial zone. So the retail A, retail B, every property in the commercial and business zones has a building line and it basically serves as a setback, similar to what the setback does in the residential zones. And if the commission doesn't determine a building line here, these would be the only two properties in the commercial zone should they choose to go that direction. That would not have a setback. And so just wanted to add some clarity on that.
Thank you. Commissioners, anybody else? Mr. Ward? Dick, you're muted. There you go. Oh, you're muted again, Dick. There you go.
The bottom left, yeah, you got it.
The comment was made that the small commercial space that the applicant is proposing compared to 12 units of residential, that that small commercial space has been sort of included in the application to justify a zoning change to retail B. And that it's sort of a, almost gaming the zoning, different zones, without a real plan or justification. I'm not, I'm not really raising it as necessarily criticism, but I just wonder if there is any response that Attorney Kaufman might have.
I do. Thank you for that question. So in the, in the retail B zone, which again, we were looking at multiple zones, as I mentioned earlier, and the housing is permitted here by special permit in a mixed-use environment. And we offer, we offer that to meet that standard. The particular standard is there's no express in the regulations. There's no minimum or maximum proposed. And there is no connection, there's no connection that's made between Section D and others that would otherwise require that. But we also, in designing it this way, knowing that we have Houston Lane and our parking restraints and what others in our community, because certainly Mr. Sinsevarino and Ms. Corson were speaking many, many months before I even came, came to be part of this application. And it was, it was desired that for redevelopment that had a residential nature, a small amount of commercial felt, you know, felt right and seemed right for that space. And we know that our other neighbors, you know, certainly feel the same. And that with all these traffic concerns, the thought of putting a large commercial property here just didn't seem, didn't really seem appropriate. But that because there are tools in this regulation that already exists, right? We could talk, we've talked and I've approached the commission before about different text changes or different map changes or creating a new zone. And I know that this is something on, that's been on your agenda privately as well in your regular meetings about, you know, what to do about certain multifamilies. We had a tool in the regulations that allowed for something like this. Certainly, could that be a little bit bigger? It could be a little bit bigger. But we thought that that was right sizing it, considering that we would be on the fringe. This would be a retail B zone on the fringe. Certainly, we have retail B zone and where we, I showed it to you on the map. All of those zones were, you know, right on a main road. Certainly, this is not on a main road, but meets the goals of connectivity, certainly. And also can provide, you know, provide retail B uses, multi, you know, multiple uses that will also feed and support the downtown. So that, that was one of the motivations for exercising the retail B and also exercising opportunities that exist within the existing regulations rather than trying to rewrite them to fit our needs. There was a tool that actually, that existed to do that. So I don't like to think of it, or the applicant as gaming them. I mean, it certainly was a thoughtful, a thoughtful application. I don't mind that you used that word. It just, I don't want it to be perceived that they're trying to work the system. But we really do have a tool that doesn't have a minimum or maximum and creates that opportunity. Could there be more here in the future? There certainly could. It's with a map change. But that's a map change without, and I think that that's a cogent argument for a map change without, without a country, right? Or a map change without a site plan application, which is, you know, why we're just trying to take that off the table now because that's not a worthy discussion of anyone's time, given the concerns that have been expressed. And we think we have a great application before you and that can be thoughtfully and appropriately executed using the zone and not abusing the zone or rewriting your regulations. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, thank you to the applicant for all of your time and work. And also thank you to neighbors and council for all of your time, input and work as well. This hearing's closed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Item four, deliberation, any possible action? Do I have a motion for approval or denial on 108 Ponus Ridge Road?
I move to approve it. I think it's appropriate for that location. Flynn?
Second.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, keep going, Jack.
I move to approve it. I think it's appropriate for that location. The lot itself is very large, even respected to the other lots in that area. I think that the use they want to put to that pool, it's a very good one, a noble one. And I think that it's something that New Canaan ought to be approval of, approving of and be proud of, in fact.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. I had a second from John Cris. Commissioners, any further discussion of the motion?
One question for Commissioner Flynn. The applicant indicated that no kitchen currently exists in the building and that not as planned. Should we include a stipulation that that would continue to be the case in the future?
Oh, you can do that. I wouldn't object to that. I don't think it's necessary. I, I wouldn't object to that. I don't think it's necessary.
Losing you, Jack.
Yeah, well, I think what we heard, Jack, is you're, you're, you don't think it's a huge need, but you're okay with going ahead with it as. Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any other discussion of the motion? Okay, I'll call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Mrs. Grzlecki?
She's muted.
Where's Jane? There you are.
Somehow I got muted. Okay, yes.
Okay. Mr. Flynn? Mr. Flynn? Yes? Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Ms. Dischornia?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Okay, Carrie's. Okay. The next item is Houston. Items two and three. I thought maybe we, we talk about what we want to do here in terms of A, thoughts and B is timing. We sort of, you know, we, I think we heard this for four times and seems like a lot of stuff was thrown at us between three and five o'clock today. And so my, my question for the commissioners is, would you like to go ahead and work on making a decision tonight? Or would you, the next meeting is early this month. So would you like to take three weeks and think more about the issues and how you feel? I mean, any thinking about that?
Could I ask a question, John? My, my question is, if I understood this correctly and if I'm the newbie here and I just didn't get it, the proposal has now changed to simply rezoning the front parcel. And so the question that I'd ask with respect to your question, if that's correct, is what new information can possibly come forward at this point that would cause any of us to change our minds, right? It seems to me that even tonight, the discussion was substantially similar to the last conversation.
Okay. Other commissioners?
Well, I'm not saying that we necessarily should postpone until the next meeting, but I'm wondering if that time to the next meeting could give us or perhaps even you and Lynn and maybe Lynn, who has obviously been very close to this, to think of any appropriate conditions if there was a motion to approve. Another alternative would be, and I'm not sure there are a lot of conditions, but in some past cases, we have sort of come up with a potential motion to deny and a motion to approve. And we sort of look at both to see what conditions might be appropriate.
Well, I, I would say reaction or go ahead, John.
Yeah, I, I think it certainly would be useful for, certainly for me, and I would hope for the commission and for Lynn, to get some direction from the, from a commission discussion regarding what our views are on this, so it gives you something to chew on and think about. We may be able to come to a conclusion tonight, which would be fine. It may be that we are, you know, on the ten yard line and there's still a few things to work out with some input from Lynn and then we can, you know, deal with those last issues the next issue, at the next meeting. But I think it would be useful for us to at least get the ball rolling tonight.
Okay, so let's give it a shot. By the way, before we proceed, did everyone who is seated this evening either attend all the hearings or listen to the tapes? We had four meetings.
I did not attend the August meeting.
Okay, and you did not listen to the tapes, Art?
I did not, but I could certainly do that beforehand.
Yeah, no, we gotta, we, what I'll need to do is I'll seat Krista instead of you for this discussion. Krista, I think you, you attended all the meetings, right?
Yes, I attended all the meetings.
Okay, great. Everybody else attended or listened to the tapes?
Yeah.
So for purposes of the discussion, Krista is seated and Art, regretfully, you are unseated. Okay, thoughts? Let's have a discussion.
I'd like to hear this, Jeff Flynn. I'd like to hear if you don't mind, the commissioners just a little bit, this point about whether or not this has been a game moving to a
Jack, we're having a really tough time hearing you.
Okay. All right, let it, let it go. Let's let others talk.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I, I think the change that the applicant made to limit the zoning change to just the those two dwellings is a step forward. Certainly cutting out Mrs. Corson's dwelling seemed very appropriate. And as far as the other two, the two multifamily that are also owned by the same, same person, the same applicant, you know, let's, my view is, let's cross that bridge when we come to it. I see no reason to, to make a decision now. We'll, we'll see how things develop and make an appropriate decision when, when and if an application is made. And so I think limiting, limiting it to the, just these two dwellings and that footprint is, is appropriate. There was also the comment on commercial, I understand that. You know, renting small commercial spaces is tough. I'm reminded of the application we had a while ago of that four unit office building right behind the Wells Fargo branch that's on Cherry Street, where it was very difficult for the owner to rent out those spaces. And so I get a sense that it can be challenging to do so, but I, I, I think, you know, I, I think, given the footprint of this, that it's a steep, winding road, I think the likelihood of this turning into some true commercial center is a little far fetched as far as I can, I can figure. And that it's really going to be mostly a residential area for the foreseeable future. And so some of the concerns about lots of traffic and commercial traffic, it just doesn't seem likely, likely to me. And regarding the design of the building, it looked like very well designed. I was encouraged by some of the changes made on the landscaping plan that seemed to be very harmonious with, with some of our environmental goals for the plan of conservation development. And so I think there's been significant progress made by the applicant in the, in the application.
Are there any potential conditions that we might want to attach to a motion to approve? I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure that there are. I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest that there have to be or that there, there need be, but we should think about it.
Kent Turner? I think one condition we might consider is on the traffic study. Perhaps we could do a sightline analysis and look at that a little closer, just to, you know, put to rest that, you know, the level of service is not going to be reduced below B and that it's, you know, a safe intersection and, you know, just get a little more tangible evidence that supports it.
Lynn, can, can that be codified, so to speak? Can we put, I guess what I'm, help me out, what I'm struggling with is so we have a peer review or we have an additional study done? And I guess the only thing we can do, tell me if I'm wrong, is, I mean, we can't subsequently deny the project. So I guess the only thing we can do is ask the traffic engineer to come up with any recommendations. I mean, Lynn, what do you think is, or what, or Kent, what do you think? I'm, I'm not.
I think that that would be a very good idea to make a recommendation that the applicant study the traffic issues a little more and maybe supplement the report. Sightline is, it's an, it's an important issue.
Yeah.
Is seen as a condition for approval. The sightline analysis is conducted.
That, that's acceptable. Okay, Lynn, does that make sense?
So the commission wants a sightline analysis conducted prior to the issuance of a building permit, if you guys would approve it?
Yeah.
Is that? That's, that's correct? Is that what you guys were thinking?
Or a fuller traffic study. But by the way, the one thing I will say is, I mean, some of us were involved. I was certainly involved in the Locust lot. And my strong guess, whether you like it or not, is there will be nothing done in the Locust lot for a long time for reasons having to do with finances, reasons having to do with COVID. And I think even if something was done in Locust, I would, I, I don't think there would necessarily, necessarily be a Heritage Hill, Ingris or Egress anyway. So, you know, for, in my mind, that's less of an issue.
I have a couple of things. As for the traffic study, I mean, there was a traffic study done in April. Granted, that was COVID, but they said that traffic counts were done in February. So I think that's more real life. Four added trips in the morning, seven added trips in the evening. So the level of service never goes below B. I don't think traffic's our problem. I can understand a sightline analysis being wanted, warranted, but is it really if there was no accident at all in the prior year, like not even one? If you want a line, if you want to side on the side of caution, I understand that. And if we want to add that as a condition, I'm totally fine with that as well. As for comparing the commercial space with the space on one, on a Cherry Street, I don't think we can compare that building with the new development. I think those two don't compare very much at all. And it was my understanding that the commercial space, didn't Ms. Kaufman say that was going to be a leasing office for the building? Was that my understanding? Okay, so they basically have a tenant already. All right. And then my last point would just be, I think it's going to be a huge vast improvement over what is there now. I mean, I, with all due respect for the historical, you know, viewpoints of those homes, that they're not upcaps and it's, I, I think a new development would be a wonderful improvement for Houston Lane right now.
Mr. Chairman? The, the town engineer also had conditions that the applicant went back and forth with and drafted a memo with conditions. So I would hope if you guys are going towards approval, that you would include those conditions as part of the approval.
Okay, Lynn, anything that jumps out at you or sort of the usual, so to speak?
I think I can pull up the memo. I don't recall all of them off the top of my head. I think some of them had to do with just where stuff was draining. There was a, there was a myriad of ones. I can pull it up if you want.
No, take a look while we're chatting. Anybody else?
I agree with Claire. I think, am I, am I married again?
Oh, you're, you're good, Jack.
I, I think it's, it'd be a great improvement to that area. So I think it was just kind of a win-win, you know, we get some housing of this type that we've been trying to encourage in town. And then we also take care of an area that is less than appealing sometimes.
This is Chris. I'll chime in and third, the things that Claire and Jean just said. I think that the project is a huge improvement. I think that if there's a location in town that's appropriate for higher density, that this location is that. My main concern, and you guys know already that I'm sort of a zoning purist here, but that we're using the wrong tool or perhaps we don't even have the right tool in the toolbox to get to the end we're trying to get to. And I don't necessarily have an issue with the end, but I, I do have concerns about the precedent we set by using retail B to get to this level of multifamily density.
John, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that is the point that I was trying to make earlier. And we're referring to Dick Ward's comments earlier as to whether or not this was an appropriate of the, of the retail zone. Appropriate, even legitimate swing from, from residential to the retail and having basically no retail. And I would just wanted to ask, and I understand now, if the commission is who would like to comment on it, if we could use one another, one another's commonest, whether or not, whether you feel it isn't appropriate of the, of the zone change. What would comment on that place?
Did anybody? Anybody? Jack, I got your first two sentences. Did anybody hear Jack well enough?
Well, I'm not.
An issue with the, with the retail component?
With using the zone change for this, for this, the purpose.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is you're, you share Krista's concerns, which is the use of the, the zone change. Yeah, I, it, well, anybody else?
Well, I, as I stated, I think the commercial aspect of this development and probably future developments in that really cul-de-sac that is Husted Lane is going to be nominal at best. It's very hard to walk down that road. How do you access it? It's sort of tucked away. And besides, maybe a law, a law office or something like that for a solo practitioner. I just think any kind of, you know, true retail shop in that area is a little hard for me to wrap my mind around.
Yeah. This is Dick. You know, I started to broach that issue a bit with Attorney Kaufman. And I thought she gave a straightforward and honest answer by basically saying, well, this was an existing tool that could be used and it seemed to fit within the language. Otherwise, they would be having to seek zoning amendments or changes elsewhere. So it seems to be a tool that's available. And I guess I don't worry too much about, you know, we do concern ourselves with setting bad precedent or what's going to happen next. But, you know, everything that comes before us, we can look at it and discuss it and go yes or no on every case, so. I thought that it was a pretty reasonable answer that she provided as to why the retail B, and it is right next to existing. So it's just sort of adding a little bit of a bubble to an existing retail B.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the thoughts of mine, I mean, first of all, I completely echo what some of you said, which is the project looks great. We've edited on a pre-app basis. We've edited, you know, through four hearings. I, I think it's a definite improvement. Krista, I do share your concerns that potentially it's an aggressive use of a map change to accomplish something. And, and I think one of the things we need to deal with that is to potentially give feedback and address that earlier on. You know, Lynn, perhaps at your stage as well as, you know, look, we did do a pre-app, we discussed it back then. So maybe this is a learning experience for us. I, but I, I don't think it's an egregious abuse. I don't think it's egregious and I don't think it's an abuse. You know, maybe it's a little too aggressive. I think Dick is spot on, which is, I think, Dick, you're the one who said this, which is, it's really, particularly now that we're only doing eight and 10. It's a, it's a slight expansion, you know, it's not a, you know, it's not a dagger into the map, so to speak. So I'm comfortable with it from that perspective. You know, we, it's interesting that. It, it's interesting that, you know, the neighbors. Um, you know, when they thought they were going to reach an arrangement, um, you know, seemed like they were in support of it and. You know, and then tonight, of course, all these issues come up once, you know, it's understood that there's not an arrangement. But, you know, I think the, I think the concern that, you know, they could take this from what it's being, what's, what's being done. Under the special permit and site plan and be turned into some monster down the road is I, I just think that's an unfounded concern. Um, so. You know, I, I think it's a good project. I think it's a good place. Um. You know, I guess we need to circle back to the traffic because I've, I've heard good impact, you know, we, we, and I, I thought Claire, your points on the traffic. Were good points. I mean, they did make some good points and. So do we necessarily need a traffic study or perhaps it's the sightline issue? Maybe that's just one issue that stood out.
Good, thanks, uh, everybody. I think that is a, was a good discussion uh of that point.
Okay, well, I think we can. I was the one who was gonna wait, but I, you know, it's been a good discussion. Thank you for getting me back on the right path. I think we can probably make a decision. I, I think the one thing we need to figure out is uh. You know, Kent on your side, uh Claire on your side, um. Or let me say Kent, I mean, do you think we need a full traffic analysis or is it more the sightline? What, what?
Oh, no, no, I, I think the work that's been done to date on the traffic study is, is good. And I'm just suggesting that uh we take that just a little further with the sightline.
Okay, so stick to the sightline.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, so are you guys okay with making a decision then? Because I also, Dick, to your point is. You know, as I thought about this, I thought about other conditions. You know, I think ultimately that this thing is pretty tight. And I will say, Mr. Green. Did bring up some good issues for us to think about as commissioners and for Lynn, you to think about as a planner. Um, but it's, you know, it just seems like it's a good application. Uh, John, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, uh, the issues from the uh town engineer that Lynn was gonna look at. If we could just be sure we have a list of those and review those before we make a decision.
Sure. Hold on one second, I'll share my screen. It's um, I think everything got addressed and the biggest ones were um. Drainage that looks like she, her last. One is that she, that everything was addressed. They were related to um. The um total um daily load of um chemicals that went into uh. They, I believe it ends up how it's draining. I mean, they're, they've all been resolved and um. But I would just add the condition that um they address any comments from the town engineer. So when she looks at the plans, when they come back to the building permit phase, that um they reflect what she's approved. In concept here.
Okay.
And Mister, Mister Goin, the one additional comment I would say is if you guys are inclined to take a vote tonight, um, and that vote is towards approval, that. Um, bear in mind that the map change needs to be effective prior to the special permit becoming effective.
Okay, um, yeah, we'll need to come up with a date. Lynn, what day, assuming somebody moves approval, what date would you want to use?
Um, how about like, something like November 30th or December 1?
Okay, so November 30th? Okay, I mean, guys, what do you think? I think we can go ahead and make, make decisions, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's start on item number two, uh, change in zoning boundary. Um, as you know, um. In order to make a decision on changing the zoning boundary, um, how does it indeed fit to the plan of conservation and development? Also, is it suitable for the location? Does it aid in protecting health, safety, welfare and property values? And does, does it aid in uh achieve attaining the purpose of the regulations? So do I have a motion for approval or denial? Just had a big discussion. Somebody's gotta jump into the cold water.
I'll move we approve it.
Good girl.
Good memory.
Thank you, Claire. Thoughts on P O C D, location, attaining the purpose of the regs?
Well, I think it, it um addresses P O C D in providing a certain type of housing that we've been trying to get, multifamily housing. It also has that type of housing close to the downtown core. Um, that kind of serves to location. Um, people will be able to access the downtown via walking or biking or, you know, it's close to shops. Restaurants, et cetera. Health and safety, um, Kent, do you want to add a sightline traffic? Supplement to the traffic survey?
We'll, we'll do that as part of number two, or we'll do that as part of the special permits, site plan approval.
Okay, um, health and safety, I don't see anything um in the proposal that raises red flags for me for health and safety. And was that, and the regulations. Um, I don't think this particular project um overreaches in um, you know, asking for something that. You know, um, going for a retail B. Um, I don't think it overreaches with this project.
Great. Thank you, Claire. Do I have a second?
Oh, or Claire in second.
Okay, I got Dick on the second. Okay, uh, additional discussion of the motion.
Ken?
I think Claire ran through the items. Uh, you had mentioned those issues which should be addressed for a zoning change. And I don't think that I've heard anything from the application and the testimony that we've heard over the past months. Uh, offends any of those issues that, that you raised and, and Claire has expanded on.
Okay, great. Yeah, what I would add is I, I would echo what Claire already said, which is on the P O C D. I think it does add to the housing supply. I think it adds to the diversity of the housing supply. And I, I, we continue to need the right housing supply. I'll disagree with somebody, somebody had said in opposition. That we don't need any more housing and, or maybe he's, maybe he's at retail, which I also think we can use some, you know, additional retail, although in this. Project, it's very specific. Um. And um. Looking at my notes here. Oh, yeah, this is important, is, you know, another issue that came up. Is, well, should we be expanding the footprint of the town? And, and, you know, I asked that question of the applicant, I think, in the first hearing. And the bottom line is, um, we, we do not want to aggressively enlarge the size of, let's call it the town footprint. But we have done it before and we've also before taken the opportunity to decrease the si- the size of the town footprint. So I don't think that's contrary to the P O C D at all. I think suitability for location, as we discussed, basically we're expanding a, you know, a, it, it. It, it's right next to the rest of the zone. So I think it's suitable for the location. And then aiding protecting health, safety, welfare and property values. I actually think the su- the surrounding property values will be enhanced. By um this project. So I think that's a, a very positive contribution. Um, and I think it does aid in attaining the purpose of the regulations. The purpose of the regulations is orderly and sensible. You know, growth and control of the town. And, and I think this is a suitable project. Anybody else?
I'll just chime in as the chairman of the subcommittee, the planning um subcommittee, that. I agree with everything you said, Mister Chairman. I think that, you know, this does provide another type of multifamily housing that. You know, we may, may not have enough of already in town. That may suit both our seniors and perhaps, I don't know the price point of this, but be more affordable to a different. Type of population that we're trying to encourage. So for those reasons, I do think it's consistent with the P O C D.
I thank you, Krista. Anybody else? Okay, I'll call the question. Uh, John Goodwin votes yes. Uh, Mrs. Grizlacki?
Yes.
Mister Flynn? Mister Chris?
Yes.
Mister Scornia?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Ward?
Yes.
Mister Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Carrie's. Okay, um, item number three, eight and 10, Husted Lane. So this is the special permit and the site plan application. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move we approve.
Okay, reasons for approval, please, John?
I see this as a uh well-designed uh uh structure that is in keeping with the. Um, uh neighboring areas and with other uh such buildings in town. I see it as providing a range of new housing and also ADA compliant housing. As well as housing at different price points. Uh, I'm also encouraged by the landscaping plan, which is um assertively using. Um, native plants that are uh friendly to our environment, so will enhance the. Physical environment of the town and environmental uh issues of the town as well.
Great, thank you. And John, the conditions?
Conditions, uh, one, uh, that the uh fire marshal. Review the uh final uh parking plan and other plans to ensure that public safety is uh, is secured. So it would need the fire marshal sign off. Um, also that a um. Uh, s- site study on traffic would be executed and that uh such study would need to be approved by the. Like, by the planning and zoning commission prior to issuance of a.
You want, John, do you want the commission to do it or the planner?
I'm okay with just the planner being uh approving it and the planner, uh, in her judgment can kick it to the commission if she feels it's something the commission as a whole should. Should decide on. It's fine with me. Leave it at her discretion.
Okay, great. And the engineering report, right?
And the engineer report, yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Mister Chairman, do we have an effective date?
Oh, sorry, we were supposed to do that on the. On the zoning boundary, right?
Right, I think you mentioned um.
We said November 30th.
Thirty, yes. So after November 30th for the special permit, please.
Okay. John, that's okay with you, Aso?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you wanna pick a date?
December 1.
Day after.
Okay.
Um, okay, further uh, further discussion of the motion. You know, from a uh special permit perspective, you know, I'll echo pretty much what uh we also talked about in terms of changing the zoning boundary. It's uh, you know, maybe we overlapped a bit there, but you know, it's a high-quality project. Um, it has been well-vetted. And think it will be a positive improvement to the town. So, you know, and as you all know, special permits goes back to the P O C D as well. So much of the same reasons we talked about for the P O C D. Um, anybody else? Okay, I'll call the question. I vote yes. Uh, Mrs. Grizlacki?
Yes.
Mister Flynn? Mister Chris?
Yes.
Mister Scornia?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Ward?
Yes.
Mister Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Um, item number five, planning subcommittee update. Krista?
Um, so Lynn and I are continuing, as you guys know, the. Sort of task we've been handed is fairly dense in terms of the amount of work and the variety of things. That we're trying to look at. So um Lynn and I are continuing to refine and prioritize. The issues um to identify those that are most, most worthy of needing a conversation with, with the rest of the subcommittee. Not saying that others don't, but like, I don't, I just don't want to waste your time. So um, that's really what we're working on behind the scenes. And in the coming week or so, Lynn and I are gonna go out and look at some of the areas where we have a convergence of multiple zoning districts. And try to um, you know, more specifically identify those areas so that we can bring those to you guys for a conversation. About what the vision is and whether we want to make any changes on the zoning map. Um, and that's the gist of where we are.
Okay, thank you. Um, administrative act, uh, item number six, administrative actions or other matters made properly, properly come before the commission. A discussion of the pedestrian access easement required per condition 54. Of the November 26, 2016 approval for the property located at 162 Park Street. Lynn?
So this is um, that you guys have required a pedestrian access, access easement that would basically provide access. From Maple Street to Mead Street um for pedestrians that were trying to access um the train station and sort of, sort of as a cut through. To replace what had been at the site prior to the development that's going up there now. Um, and the applicant's attorney came back and spoke with the town attorney and myself. We went back and forth several times. Um, and we were ready to approve it and I reread condition number 54 and you guys had asked that it come back before you. Um, so I'm bringing it back before you to um. See if we're missing anything. I can bring up the, their zoning location survey for the sites. You can actually see where the. Um, the pedestrian access easement will be. So this is uh, the, this is the uh zoning location survey and the pedestrian access easement is. Really gonna just generally follow a path from me to Maple Street across. Um, the questions were raised um by several members of the public. Um, their letters are published and you've also received copies of them. But whether or not it would be able to access the cemetery over here. While the access easement is meant to get you from me to Maple or vice versa, you can access the cemetery via other pathways. That come off of that access easement. Does anyone have any questions?
Mister Chairman, I think, I think I better re- continue to recuse myself on this.
Oh, yeah, good point.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, this Jack Flynn, it, it, it appears the, uh, looking at this uh pathway. That uh there is an access to the cemetery. Um, there's an oval between proposed, the two proposed buildings and is that a walkway?
Yeah, yeah, there's a walkway and um, we were just out there the other day at the site. Um, the applicant has uh planted trees. It's pretty open. You can actually access the uh. Cemetery on the other side from the, from the condos over here. There's an opening in the fence where you can actually walk onto the cemetery. But at some future date, if um you wanted to, you could take this pedestrian access easement and walk. To the cemetery.
Uh, you, good, that's good. The cemetery is, is a uh, is a significant uh location. Uh, for any town, certainly for, for our town and the, and the history of that. Um, and so I think that's wonderful. That's good that that's there. I think, I think that in the uh approval. Uh, or in the appropriate, appropriate spot, we've, that we should indicate uh that uh, that this pathway. From uh, from me to uh, uh, to Maple, uh, provides that access to the cemetery. Uh, so if we formalize it in that document, so the, so the owners of the, of the overall property are committed to that. Not to, not just the uh, the access from Maple to me, but also the access to the cemetery. I, I don't know where you, that you put that, but perhaps you do.
Well, Jack, my concern would be. I mean, Lynn, tell me if I'm wrong. We would then have to amend the special permit, which I'm very reticent.
Yeah.
You attempted.
Well, another public hearing condition.
I mean, look, the, and, and Lynn, is, is the cemetery also accessible from um? I think it, is it the South Avenue condominiums?
Yes, it is.
Okay. You know, I, I guess. You know, I, I, I guess I still have the wounds from. Seemed like 17 hearings. Um, and quite frankly, my opinion is, you know, I know there's members of the community. Will disagree with my statement. Um, but the commission put a lot of time into doing its best. Um, to protect and deal with the cemetery. Those of you around the commission will remember that we had, you know, the head of archaeology come down and speak to the commission, multiple reports. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what else we can do at this point. And I certainly don't want to attempt to reopen the special permit.
No, no, of course not. Can it, could it be a, a condition of approval?
Condition of approval of the easement?
No, they know that the easement will always provide access to the cemetery.
That, you already gave that condition as part of the approval.
Yeah, so Jack, the challenge.
Perpetuity.
Right.
All right, good enough. That's good, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just not, I mean, Lynn, is there anything else we could do? I, I just don't think there is.
I don't think, I mean, no, I mean, this is, the easement's gonna be recorded and it's gonna be recorded in perpetuity on the property. And there was a, there was a memo, and I've spoken to town council, that, that town council had written back in April of 2018 when they had proposed to extinguish the existing access to the cemetery. And essentially, they're, they extinguished one prior access but are providing access. So it's moved, there's access to the cemetery.
So, so, so just to be clear, this easement agreement with the town will include the walking path from Maple to Mead, as well as a spur that goes towards the cemetery. And all the spur, as well as the path from Maple to Mead, there will be easements on, on both of those pieces that people can reasonably access the cemetery during most hours of the day.
The, the, the access easement only governs the direct access across from.
It does not cover the spur.
Right, but the spur is accessible, anyone can access it off of the easement and go to the cemetery.
Yeah, I'd still be, I'd still would like to ensure that there is access to the cemetery. You get access to the other property, but then you have to negotiate with the other property, which we have never crossed that bridge. And so having this, you know, land block piece of heritage that is really not legally accessible.
Well, the easement, if, we've approved the easement, and that's public. So people can walk through that, and they can walk down to the spur to the cemetery.
Yeah, I guess technically the owner of the view could prevent you from using the spur. I'd be shocked if they did, but.
Just the way it's designed, I mean, there's no way to really block off. If you went on that walkway on the access easement, you could easily access the cemetery. I mean, it's not closed off, and they're actually working with the historic society and a group that's working with the historic society to, to do, addressing some of the other conditions, a special fence and signage that acknowledges the cemetery is there. So it doesn't seem like the applicant is trying to prevent people from accessing the cemetery.
So Lynn, you're saying the owners of the view are working with this, with the historical society?
They are, via our office, with staff and planning and zoning.
Has anyone looked into the legal issues of whether a, an easement has been created simply because over the past 200 years, people have walked to it? It's often how easements are created. Just asking.
That specific question wasn't asked, I don't think. But we've been over this with the applicant's attorney and with the town's attorney and with myself multiple times, multiple meetings and multiple iterations of the document back and forth.
John, can I speak as a member of the public?
No, we're not.
My name's Stephen Einstein, I'm an attorney.
Mr. Einstein, we're not taking input from the public tonight.
Okay, thank you, John.
Sure, thank you.
I would like to speak also, I would like to say something.
This is Mrs..
I understand that, but if you approve it tonight, no one has a chance.
Lynn, please mute her.
Yes.
I would like to.
She's muted.
Okay. Okay, Lynn, do you need a vote?
Ideally, yes. That would be, but, I need, I need at least your consent. A vote would give us the consent, so like, this can be signed off by staff so we can get it recorded with the town clerk.
So you want to vote?
Yes.
Where are the exhibits?
Okay. Okay, for the purposes of this discussion, by the way, Mr. Cassavan has announced at the beginning of the night, you're seated for Mr. Radman. And Ms. Nielsen, you're seated for Mrs. Grzleki. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the review of discussion 54 of the pedestrian access? We can deny it too, if you'd like.
I'll, I'll move the denial. I'll, I'll move that we approve.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. I vote yes. Mr. Flynn?
I vote yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Scornia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Oh, she's muted.
Yes.
Ms. Cassavan, Mr. Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, great. Carrie's. Okay, approval of the minutes, September 29, 2020, regular meeting. Lynn, I had one item. It said eight and nine, I have written, was under regular meeting. I gotta look at the minutes, but you, you had something in the wrong order.
Okay.
Have the minutes handy?
Let me see if I can pull them up. Hold on a second. I don't think, I don't think we posted them.
I got it.
Okay.
So. You put eight and nine under regular meeting, or whoever did the minutes? And that should be under the public hearing.
Okay, we'll correct that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Kent Turner, my name was left out on the vote.
Oh, oops, sorry about that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, I vote yes. Mrs. Grzleki? Jean, did we lose Jean?
Oh, yeah, she's not here, she dropped. You might have lost her. She's not on.
Jack, you were not at the meeting, correct? Okay. John, Chris?
Yes.
Ms. Scornia?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Lose Kent?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, everybody. Good night. Meeting's adjourned.
Good night.
Good job.
Peace out.